It is 7:27 and I would like to call the Lansing City Council meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
This is Councilmember Betts, present from Lansing, Michigan, dialing remotely. I butchered that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar.
Present from Lansing.
Councilmember Garza.
Councilmember Garza here, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present, participating remotely from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
And Councilmember Wood.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. We have eight members present on the quorum. No members are absent. We are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Are there members of council? Hold on just a second. I'm sorry. All right, I think I'm ready. Are there any one that members of council or the mayor would like us to keep in our thoughts as we meditate this evening? All right, well, let's, let's continue to keep those who have been impacted by the ongoing global pandemic in our thoughts as we reflect for a moment this evening. Thank you. Okay, now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We need reading and approval of the, hold on just a second. I got a text from the mayor that he can't get into the meeting, but I don't see your name on here, Mr. Mayor, as a participant, so raise your hand and we'll, we'll promote you. There you are. User 101534.
There he is. Okay.
I know it's a binary spelling of sure. Okay.
You have for your approval the print of council proceedings of just September 14th and September 21st.
All right, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the council proceeding, sorry, council proceedings of September 14th and 21st as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a discussion about the two sets? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the proceedings are approved and we are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute in memory of Marcus Chantuan Jackson Burton.
Mr. Vice President.
Sir, President Spatafor, we do have, I don't know how you want to handle this. We do have the mother of Marcus Jackson Burton with us. Her name is Miranda Hinton Burton. She is in the meeting. She can hear us, but I do not see her. She thought she was logged in as Miranda, but I don't see her on the attendees.
All right, Miranda, if you could raise your hand, that would be the best. So if you're on a computer, Alt-Y. Here we are. All right, I'm gonna make this person a panelist and.
All right, fantastic. As you pull her over, you know, it's, it truly is an honor to be able to introduce this, this tribute in, in memory of Marcus Jackson Burton. It really to acknowledge a pretty noble effort that is currently underway in his honor and really on behalf of Lansing's youngest citizens. I know we all recall the tragic events of August 3rd, where two young men, brothers of one another, Marcus Jackson Burton, as well as Stephen Jackson, were shot outside of the Pleasant Grove Plaza in southwest Lansing. Both young men would eventually die as a result of those injuries that were sustained from the shooting. In the days, really in the weeks after, I think our community learned a lot about these young men. You know, we learned about their respective kind of contributions to our community, the important roles they played or played within their families, and really the things they were accomplishing as young men in different parts of the country. Marcus had moved on to Texas and Stephen had moved on to Georgia. There were a few vigils that were held. There were important community conversations that took place, you know, resulting from this tragedy and their, you know, candidly, their efforts that are ongoing to address some of the circumstances that allowed for something like this to happen. In any event, council learned that the mother of Marcus Jackson Burton was conducting a toy drive this holiday season to ensure that her son's memory and his legacy of giving back to his community really lived on. And so we found it absolutely necessary to acknowledge her effort and to support it the best we could because ultimately, you know, Marcus does, deserves that and more. So I would like to quickly, if possible, it is in your packet, read from the resolution and have it moved and supported. And then I'd like to ask Marcus's mother, Miranda Burton Hinton, to say a few words. Okay. So it says, whereas Marcus the comedian Jackson Burton was born March 30th, 1988, the son of Kenneth and Miranda Fay Hinton and Stephen and Tanya Jackson, and whereas Marcus graduated in 2006 from Sexton High School in Lansing, Michigan. He later, he later attended Davenport University in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and will go on to work 12 years for the General Motors Corporation, both in Lansing, Michigan, as well as Arlington, Texas. Marcus loved sports and participated in a number of them, which included basketball track and football. He also coached Little League football because he loved to spend time with his four children, who were his absolute pride and joy. And whereas, from an early age, Marcus was blessed with the gift of making others laugh. It was in 2011 when he decided to take his gift to the next level, launching his first of many comedy shows. His charming and witty personality brought him to the big stage with high-profile comedians such as Kevin Hart, Ricky Smiley, and DC Young Fly. Marcus was known best for his big smile and his deep dimples. If he had a bad day, you would have never known it because he never stopped smiling and working to ensure the happiness of others. And whereas tragically, Marcus Chantuan Jackson Burton was taken from us too soon on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, at the age of 32 years by a senseless act of violence. That said, equally as big as his smile and infectious personality was his heart, which even in death, Marcus continued, continued giving to others as an organ donor, allowing seven others to live through his heroic act of kindness. And whereas, the family of Marcus Chantuan Jackson Burton is conducting a toy drive through December 15th in honor of his life. The toys collected will be donated to Sparrow's Pediatric ICU, the Women's Shelter, and through Secret Santa to families in need. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lansing City Council recognizes Marcus Jackson Burton and the impact he had on his family, friends, and the entire Lansing community. Also, the Lansing City Council wishes to recognize Marcus's family for the toy drive, toy drive being conducted in his honor and behalf of Lansing youth. So I would like to first, President Spatafor, move the resolution and then I would allow, I would like to allow, sorry, Marcus's mother, not only to, you know, discuss Marcus and the impact he had on our community, but also to discuss the toy drive and how folks can support. So with that said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. Motion has been made. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President, you'd like to vote on it and then allow her an opportunity, either way, so completely an opportunity. Very good. Yes, let's go ahead and Patricia, you have your hand up for discussion. Would you like to make some comments?
I would, just really briefly, and I encourage everybody who's listening also to, you know, contribute to this. You know, it's, it's, I can't imagine, and as I spoke to you on the phone, I can't imagine as the mother of sons, of two sons, the pain you feel and I, and I'm deeply sorry to be able to turn that around, to do something good and to make a positive contribution to the city. I'm overwhelmed and I just wanted to tell you publicly, I've already told you privately, but I wanted to tell you publicly, you know, how amazed I am by this and, you know, how overwhelmed I am that you can actually do this for this community. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Don't get me crying because I do the ugly cry, so it's not gonna be good. So, but I did want to thank you personally.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, for those words. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to personally thank Ms. Burton Hinton, just for her years of selflessness. It doesn't surprise me one bit that I hear that you're organizing this drive because you've been selfless as long as I've known you since the early 2000s and just terribly sorry that this happened to your family. So fitting that you used a toy drive because the joy he brought, the smiles he brung, is gonna continue this year and beyond. So, I'm sorry this happened and you have a great family, you're a great person, and Marcus was a great person too.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Very much appreciate that. I see no other hands raised, so let's, let's approve the resolution and then ma'am, you'll have an opportunity to, to speak to, to the council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much, everybody. Miranda, the floor is yours if you'd like to unmute yourself. Let me see if I can get that for you. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. First, I just want to say thank you for all you guys' love, support, and everything during this very, very difficult time for me and my family. And as, as far as the toy drive, the most important thing to me and what's really has driven me to do the toy drive is even in Marcus's death, he gave, he did the gift of life and he was able to save seven other people during, even with his death. So, that's what's really, really pushing me to do the toy drive because he was just such a remarkable young man.
We thank you for your continued efforts on that and for being here this evening to share this moment with the council. Mr. Vice President, is there anything you wish to add?
Miranda, if you could, for everybody listening, because we want to make sure that this is, is well-supported because Marcus deserves this, as do you. Could you tell folks where they could drop off toys?
The drop off points is BW's on Holmes Road, Wing Heaven, which is right in that plaza, um, Classy Image, Fetish LLC, Tax Guru, and we also have an Amazon link. So if you don't want to go out and shop because of the COVID, you can order the toys off Amazon as well.
Is there a website that we could share with the folks?
Amazon.com and then type in my name, Miranda Hinton, and it, and it'll pop up.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, thank you very much for being with us this evening. And we're incredibly sorry for your loss, but inspired by your, your commitment to public service and, and the legacy of your sons. We will move now to Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmembers, any comments? Miss, Councilmember Spitzley.
Hey to Kathy this evening. You know, as we're coming off the Thanksgiving holiday and, you know, we have here in Lansing absolutely so much to be thankful for. I, I wanted to thank the, there are just a few organizations I would name, but just thank all of the organizations that came together to provide food to those who are needy, to provide a meal. This is, this is a crazy time with COVID and there are, there were a lot of people that were out of work and, you know, were, you know, trying to figure out how they were gonna provide a meal to their families. And, and, you know, Lansing stepped up as they usually do. And, and so I wanted to thank a few people. I know that we had Food Pantry going on the weekend before that. We also had a food drive that were, you know, established with Josh Gillespie. We had a food drive sponsored by Keith Tate, Sarah Anthony, Jody Clemmons, Darrell Slaughter, and David Jones. We also had a food drive sponsored by The Village, Eric King, and Dekeah Quinney Davis. And, and those are just a few of them, but it's important, I think, to lift those entities and those community organizations up that are out there in the trenches, doing the work and, and helping those who are less fortunate. So I wanted to just say thank you to everybody who helped someone out over this weekend.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Other comments from Councilmember, Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I have a question for the city attorney. We received documents from Sherry that were to be used in closed session. Since we are not having a closed session, are those documents able to be shared with the public?
Well, that's gonna have to be the council's decision. You did waive attorney-client privilege, so it's not, it's, there's no privilege to question whether the council wants to share it with the public. As it was delivered to the city council.
We waived privilege on a subject matter. We didn't raise on the document, so we would have to waive privilege on the, the document, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, got your answer. Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Spitzley, your hand is up. Was that just response to the other? Okay, very good. No other comments from councilmembers? Moving on to the city clerk.
I have no comments. So we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in our viewing audience that has a community event that you would like to take up to one minute to tell the details of, you can raise your hand virtually through the participant screen or star nine on the phone. And I don't see any. So we'll move on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight does include the three public hearings, or I'm sorry, four public hearings, including the form-based public, Form-Based Zoning Code. Also includes all of the resolutions listed under the consent agenda and resolutions for action, as well as the ordinance, ordinances for introduction and the ordinance for passage. So, many items to, to address if you wish to. You'll have up to three minutes. You are required to raise your hand virtually by the time the first speaker is finished in order to be recognized. So go ahead and start raising your hand. And while you are having time to do that, we will move on to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to congratulate, we had a great mobile food pantry. I know that was mentioned. And I also want to congratulate Willard Walker and Kim Coleman, who run our HRCS for organizing another great, successful mobile food pantry. I want to congratulate our Office of Financial Empowerment and the school district. We had a fantastic Lansing Save Night where we talked with many students about the ability to save money with, and financial empowerment for them and all of their Lansing Save accounts. And many of those students earned money into their Lansing Save accounts from MSU FCU. So another great event. Wanted to let any small business owners who were watching know that we are going to have a, an event with, with an organization called Partner America, which does small business assistance planning. It's gonna be Wednesday, December 9th. I don't have the specific details, but you can check with my office or LEAP. LEAP is organizing this. They're a national company that helps small businesses do planning, so we're excited about that. If anybody has a neighborhood cleanup application or a Walking Wednesday application for 2021, we are accepting applications for either of those, for neighborhood cleanups or Walking Wednesdays for when, when the snow melts and the sun and the weather gets warm again in 2021. So I know we're early, but this is a good time to get those applications in. In the, the middle of December, we'll have our next Lansing Living Guide come out. It's going to be strictly digital because things keep changing. We're gonna be adding to it and deleting from it based on the Department of Health and Human Services orders. So it's gonna be digital so that we can update it. I like the books. I know many people like the books, but right now, whatever we print today could be, could be completely different next week. So we'll be printing that and issuing that digitally and letting folks know about that so they can check out the events. And finally, we'll be having two WebEx Insurance enrollment meetings for the retiree healthcare changes. So any retirees that are, that are watching that have questions, and I know people have questions, December 3rd and December 10th, we will have these WebEx enrollment meetings. I don't have the Zoom info. Judy Keeler will have that. She's been working with the companies to make sure that that information gets out to our retirees so they can work with, work with the companies that are dealing with the insurance enrollment. So those are coming up and the phone numbers are still available, toll-free numbers for those who have questions. And that's what I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters and I'll briefly announce what the public hearings are that are in addition to the actions that council will be acting on. Number one, Z82019, 5400 South Cedar, a conditional rezoning to G2 Wholesale District. Number two, Z22020, 5528 South Martin Luther King, rezoning to F Commercial District. Number three, Z3 of 2020, 1030 South Holm Street, rezoning to DM4 Residential District. And number four, the ordinance to institute Form-Based Zoning Code. Mr. President?
Yes. All right. So we move to item one. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first public hearing is for a conditional rezoning at 5400 South Cedar. This is the U-Haul site, the proposed U-Haul site, but used to be the Kmart building rezoning from F Commercial and J Parking Districts to G2 Wholesale District. We've had a lot of comment on this. At one point, the proposed owners withdrew the proposal so that we, they could do some outreach to the community. That outreach is done. And with that, I'm gonna move it. Do I move it or what do I do here? Or just, I'm, I'm just discussing the public.
Yeah, you just discussed it. I'll refer him. You know, I've been doing this for a year now and I still, I have to think about it. So it doesn't make me feel so bad. You've been doing it a little longer.
The next one is in consideration. It's a rezone Z22020 and it's at 5528 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. It's a rezoning from this to F Commercial District. This one is kind of a correction. It's, it's a very small sliver of D1 Professional, surrounded by F Commercial District. And so the owners want, the proposed owners want to have a commercial enterprise there, but the planning department, the planning department and the planning commission looked at it and the professional office zone is kind of inconsistent with the surrounding area. And so that's the purpose of that rezoning. Um, Z-3-2020, 1030 South Holm Street is the Holm Street School where the developer is proposing to rezone it from B Residential and D1 Professional Office Districts to DM4 Residential District. They want to build apartment complex there. This was also one that generated a lot of public comment. There were some commitments made to preserve green space and also do some other things, allowing a common area. And the, the site plan doesn't really show that that's happening, but, so that, that's that one. And then the last one is the ordinance to institute a Form-Based zoning. And we had a, quite a lengthy presentation on that during committee of the whole.
All right. So you did it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are to.
I was waiting for him to stop me, but I was like, I'm going, I'm going.
No, I was, I was enjoying it.
We are now then to the public comment on those matters as well as the items that will be acted on tonight. The first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by David Lambert. And again, once the first speaker is done, we will cut off the sign up for public comments. Go ahead, Loretta.
Okay. First off, Kmart, again, or still, I am not in favor of this rezoning. And I think there's a little bit of a push here to get this done because it would not qualify under the new Form-Based that you're looking at approving somewhere in the near future. So I think we need to stop acting out of fear and wait for something that's better use of this space that generates more traffic, that generates more associated businesses and income. On the Form-Based, there's not enough public awareness of how this would impact property values and property owners' rights and property taxes. We don't need a one-size-fits-all code. Other cities that have adopted Form-Based have done it in districts like District Old Town, District Downtown, District Rio Town versus All Town. It focuses on form and appearance versus use. And in that case, we lose some control of what is done inside the building while also losing control of what is done outside of the building. It impacts building heights, setbacks, parking, frontages, building types, signage, service entrances, density, traffic, and parking. And it's an attempt, in my view, to change the DNA of the city. The city is a blue-collar, working-class, industrial town. And I think this is an attempt to move us from our DNA to a diversity in age and from a diversity in age and appearance and construction techniques and materials to a more homogeneous structural look that makes everything look the same. The window for existing buildings to make significant structural change is too narrow. Reducing parking requirements results in pushing business parking into the neighborhoods. I am a landscaper in my career and I do not see how this could impact interior landscaping, which it proposes to do. It limits the number of dogs and RVs and antennas and whether people can do do-it-yourself auto repairs in their yards. It's too restrictive on exterior landscaping and too strong of a push towards walking and biking and busing. It limits public and private existing property owners' rights to modify their properties in new and extreme ways. As I mentioned during the committee of the whole, I spoke with a business owner Friday who is planning expensive and extensive changes to his existing building, which could not be completed in time and would not be allowed under this new code. So I am a no vote on Form-Based and I am a no vote on Kmart rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Lambert, followed by Sean Z.
Thank you, David Lambert, 1023 South Holm Street. The, the main thing I wanted to speak about was the, the rezoning to multifamily residential at 1030 South Holm Street. Based on what I've heard of the plan, I am in favor of it. I, I believe that dense residential is the best use of building on that property and I've, and as long as the green space is, is preserved, I think the, it'll be an asset to the neighborhood. And I, I just wanted to also say. And I, I just wanted to also say a little bit about the other rezonings. I, I think that the proposed use on South Cedar and the proposed use on South MLK are, are both actually appropriate and, and for this city and, and good uses of the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Sean Z, followed by John Gilmore.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the, the Montgomery drain issue that I didn't get a chance to talk about last time.
That's not on for action tonight. So you would.
Mr. Clerk, I'll address that too real quick. Sir, that's not on the, the agenda for this evening. This is just the legislative portion. We are going to have a special committee, public service committee that's yet to be scheduled to, to address this, this very specific issue. So you, you're welcome to stick around to the tail end of this meeting and make public comment in the, in the general section. But there will also be a special meeting for that purpose.
Okay, just if you can try to make it known for people when the, to be able to learn knowledge and communicate, it would be great because this is a very important issue that affecting a lot of people.
Yep, thank you.
President Spatafor, is that general services?
Public services.
Public services.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next, we have John Gilmore and then Kathleen Edgerly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I'm actually the applicant. I, my name is John Gilmore. I'm the president of U-Haul of Western Michigan. I've spoken in front of you guys several times on this over the course of the last two years. New to the proposal, which is in front of you tonight, which is different from the previous proposals, is we have gone back, we did withdraw our application, went back to the planning department, we went back to the neighborhoods. We have updated the green space on the property, added additional green space to their updating and, and investing more in property here. This is about a 10, eight to $10 million investment into the south side of Lansing. The jobs, this will add 10 to 15 permanent positions as well as 20 to 30 temporary construction jobs. And, and the jobs that will add are, are good jobs between 12 and $18 an hour. We see this as a necessary addition to the product line that we offer already. Our customers are looking for more from us. Our storage business is, we, we are constantly above the average. 90% are better on occupancy at our current facilities. We, we look forward to being able to get in here, revamp this, invest into the neighborhoods, get some additional jobs, clean up this site. I'm a native of Lansing myself, born and raised. I hate to see this building sit and dilapitate as it is currently doing. We look forward to taking this project on cleaning up the building, cleaning up the site, making it aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, investing and hopefully getting others to invest in the south side again as well. We would love to see things take back off, see some of the empty buildings along Cedar Street get filled back up. We believe that we can be a catalyst to that with this particular property, especially being so large and ungainly for any developer to take on. We are not only prepared to do so, we have a track record of doing so successfully, very aesthetically pleasing. We've done this multiple times in many communities and it has come to nothing but good for the community. We have our facility at the, the corner of Jolly and Cedar. And as if you've been, obviously everyone here has been there, has seen it. It, we keep it clean. We keep it well organized. We are not a blight on the community. We, we are a service to the community, the community needs and is demanding more of at this moment. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Kathleen Edgerly, followed by Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. Kathleen Edgerly, Executive Director of Downtown Lansing, Inc. I am back this evening to once again speak in support of the Lansing Shuffle Board and Social Club. In the past, I've been asked by council members and others what my thoughts were regarding this project and the future of downtown. So I actually talked to other business owners and we've had numerous business owners express numerous times the need for more anchor businesses and attraction based businesses that will bring folks not only from the Lansing area, but other part of our state as well to come visit and enjoy downtown Lansing. And also in these COVID times with an increase that we're seeing in the vacancy rates downtown and the feeling of some that people are essentially turning their backs on downtown, it is so critically important. And I'd also like to say wonderful that we have developers interested and willing to invest at a time when investment is especially hard. Not only is this a multifaceted project and space that'll serve a variety of uses, cultural, business wise and other, but it also serves as, and I said it before, the perfect entrepreneurial feeder system for those entrepreneurs who currently have food trucks, are working out the Allen Neighborhood Center at different farmers markets to take it to the next step. Build their business, build their investments, build their business plan and loyal clientele, and then go on to fill these bricks and mortar locations throughout our city. Thank you.
And thank you. Next we have Bruce and feel free to give us your full name, followed by Emily Syria.
My name is Bruce Gershenson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am, I represent the owners of the former Kmart property. We have owned this property for well over 40 years and have always been and continue to be a good member of this community. When the Kmart closed over three years ago and we've been in the retail, commercial shopping center business for well over 40 years and have contact with all the major discount and supermarket and other retailers. We have spent three years trying to entice a retailer to occupy this building with no success. We have also reached out to the office community, to municipal, general office and medical office community with no success. The two users that expressed interest in our building were first several marijuana growing facilities. And the second was a Fortune 500 company, the U-Haul Company. We felt it was in the best interests of the city of Lansing and this area in particular to pick a user that would be more beneficial to that area. And that is why we selected U-Haul. Needless to say, in these challenging times for retail, not only are the retailers having difficulty, but you may have read even recently CBL, which owns the Meridian Mall, has filed for bankruptcy. The Lansing Mall is up for sale and has tenant problems. And retail as a whole is having its difficulties. So, you know, from our standpoint, we have tried to bring the best possible use to this area of Lansing. We feel confident that this is a user who not only is not asking for any government assistance of any kind, but the tax dollars will help support the schools, the police, the fire department and the community as a whole. So we're very, very hopeful that the city council will see their way clear to granting approval. You have a recommendation from your planning staff for approval. You have a recommendation from the planning commission for approval. You have approved similar situations on Martin Luther King. And we, you know, hopefully will at least request of you to see your way clear to supporting this project as well. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. Next we have Emily Sirja, followed by Pat Lennon.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks. I just wanted to call and say that I do support the proposed form based code. I think the old code that we have is a bit outdated and I appreciate this sort of modernization. I do want to provide a counterpoint to one of the previous callers. I think Ms. Stanaway is really misrepresenting the extent to which this new code would encourage the use of public transit and cycling and other alternative modes of transportation. I, I don't think it's really quite that, that extreme. But I do support any measure that does make it safer for those of us to participate, who do partake in alternative commutes, which I do. And I believe this code would help with that to, to some extent. I also, if you, if you look at the attachments that is in the agenda for today's meeting that outlines a form based code, I think it actually does a very good job outlining both form and use. So I think it's not just a purely aesthetic code. It still allows for the preservation of our current neighborhoods through grandfathering. And it's consistent with the master plan that we have in place. So I just wanted to voice my support for the form, form based code. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Pat Lennon, followed by Nancy Parsons-Meilow.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name's Pat Lennon and I'm the chairman of the Zoning and Land Use Practice Group at the Hahneman Law Firm. We were asked by the owner of the property with respect to the 5400 South Cedar conditional rezoning application to study the application in Michigan laws that applies to it. We previously submitted our letter, which is dated September 29, 2020, which we understand was circulated to all of you. As you may have seen, our letter contains a very thorough analysis of the application and ultimately concludes that it should be approved under Michigan law. This analysis and conclusion is consistent with the determinations of the city planning board and the city staff. We hope you agree with these interpretations and we hope you approve the application. Normally we would go through our entire letter with you and discuss the various standards and criteria. Unfortunately, due to the time limitation, we really only have the chance to emphasize a couple what we think are important items. The first is that there's precedent for this particular application. In 2018, the city approved a conditional rezoning application for the property located at 930 West Holmes Road. Like the application before you, the Holmes Road application involved the conversion of a former large box facility into a self-storage facility. The properties, neighborhoods and conditional rezoning applications are essentially the same. As discussed in detail in our letter and in the legal cases that we cite in our letter, the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution requires that zoning authorities treat similarly situated parties in a similar fashion. We believe these cases are similar, similar and should be treated the same. We also wanted to point out that we've heard arguments that there's potentially too much self-storage in the area or that, and that capacity issues should serve as a grounds for denial of this application. We contend that the question of whether there is sufficient demand or too much capacity is really not an appropriate consideration for city council with respect to this type of application. If the application were denied on these grounds, it would be tantamount to the city using its power to pick winners and losers in the marketplace. It would amount to protecting existing businesses, negating price competition and preventing new competitors from entering the market. Is well established that denying an application on these grounds would not be appropriate. In the end analysis, we urge you to closely review our September 29 letter and see for yourselves why we believe the application satisfies all the applicable legal requirements. We also ask that you consider the approval of the Holmes Road rezoning and treat this application the same way. We hope this discussion night has been of assistance and we hope that you will approve the application. As always, we'll be available if you'd like more information or if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we, Nancy Parsons-Meilow, followed by Diane Byram.
Good evening, council members. I want to speak tonight on the form based code. I think that there's some good to it. However, I want to address the seriousness with the parking. No, parking is not eliminated from form based code, but it is definitely pushes it into the neighborhood. We've got a prime example, which is not under form based code. It's has to do with the overlay district, whatever you want to call it. But we have a restaurant, you all heard me talk about it on Michigan Avenue. And we end up with multiple, multiple cars parked in the neighborhood. Many streets have double parking on both sides. People parking in, in, they can't even get to their own homes, can't even get to their own drives. People even park in their driveways. This is a serious issue for, for the neighborhoods. And this is one major reason why you need to take this into consideration. It also pushes traffic. Yes, we are trying to make our city a more bikeable, walkable community, but come down on Michigan Avenue on any given night when it's not a COVID, however. And you will see what the neighbors have to put up with over here. So the, my other issue is the Kmart. I think that there's a better use for the Kmart property. This is a prime piece of property on a major thoroughfare. And I, we don't need any more storage units and a site is already saturated. So thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you. Next is Diane Byram, followed by Zach Whaley.
Diane Byram.
Am I muted? Was I muted?
We can hear you.
I should have asked like everyone else. Well, good evening. As you know, I'm Diane Byram and I've been assisting on the community outreach efforts for the former Kmart property located at 5400 South Cedar Street in Lansing. And I wanted to share with you some of the activities that we've been doing because they've been very robust and very transparent. We started back in March by mailing nearly 12,000 postcards to every registered household in the second ward of Lansing. And the postcard included a drawing of the site plan as well as a brief description of the project and both the cell phone and email address of John Gilmore from U-Haul, whom you heard from earlier tonight, to answer any local residents' questions they may have. John actually received three contacts from, from both that 12,000 postcard mailing. Additionally, city council members received the postcard. A presentation was made at the South Lansing Business Association at one of their regular board meetings. A community meeting was held in the end of July. A flyer was sent to the Old Everett Neighborhood Association, the South Lansing Business Association and city council members for posting and circulation. There have been numerous media stories about this. The Lansing State Journal in January had an, an extensive article. Both Channel 10 and Channel 6 has covered this rezoning, this proposal twice each. In August, the State Journal printed an opinion article by Seamus Smith and he testified at the, one of your local committee meetings in August. Wanda, Wanda Williams posted a Zoom Q, Q and A session with John Gilmore and posted it on her Facebook page. She also held a Facebook Live event with local residents at the Kmart site. The councils received letters of support. I know you received two letters at least from the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce. And finally, an opinion leader was, letter was posted in Lansing State Journal just the Sunday before Thanksgiving on November 22nd by Wanda Williams. So we've done extensive community outreach. We've been very transparent about this. And I would urge council to look favorably upon this rezoning request for, by the U-Haul Company. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next we have Zach Whaley, followed by Wanda Williams.
Hello, Zach Whaley, fourth ward. I just wanted to confirm, is this a section where we could remark on resolutions for action as well, not just the?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Um, I just wanted to comment on, I see on the agenda that there's resolution for action brought by council member Wood to reconsider the vote by which Grant acceptance the Michigan State Police Authority Theft Prevention Authority, Grant was not adopted. Grant was not adopted. I just wanted to voice my opinion against reconsidering that adoption, if that's still in fact an option. I've been looking a lot into the research and I can't find a single thing of, a single example of a police officer, at least in greater, like in all of Michigan, who was able to prevent an automobile theft. And I would challenge council members who are interested in potentially voting for that, even though it was already voted down in council, to try to think of an example where it would be auto thief, considered whether or not LPD had an additional $140,000 in funding before they broke into a car and how much of a difference that would make in that decision process. That's pretty much it. Thanks. See the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Wanda Williams, followed by Chris Buck.
Hello.
Hi, Wanda.
Hi, I'm Wanda Williams and I am a local multimillion-dollar producer real estate agent in the area for the past 33 years. And being a local real estate agent, I fully, fully understand the importance of how the value of a property will decline the longer it's on the market. This property has been on the market for almost four years. It started out at $3.5 million. The stock declined. The price was reduced to $2,750,000. Eventually, they got a great offer from a Fortune 500 company that wants to contribute up to $10 million to beautify that location and to help with paying taxes in the city of Lansing. I'm not understanding why the city council isn't getting it. A company that is a Fortune 500 company and wants to invest in our community. I have walked our neighborhood over here by the U-Haul and my neighbors are united and they would like to see the U-Haul project go forward. I am tired of going by that U-Haul when I walk my dogs and seeing people drop off trash, drop off couches. And also just to see people just lingering behind the building, which creates a problem for a person's safety. The U-Haul company's project is a good project. We need to go forth with it. If we don't, we're going to lose tax funding. The value of the property is going to continue to go down. All of the people that have indicated an interest in this property besides the U-Haul have been nonprofits. They have scouted, scouted medical companies, big box stores. You know, brick and mortar stores are going out. They're going out the door. And especially with coronavirus. When you got a fish in the hand, like we've got the U-Haul project, I'm encouraging the city council to go ahead and vote for this project because we need the money. We don't need this building just sitting there doing nothing. The value is going to continue to go down. It's not going to go up. It's going to go down. And if they've been trying to find someone for almost four years and the only company that's come forward is U-Haul, we need to go ahead with what we have because it's not going to get any better than this. Thank you for listening to me and good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Buck, followed by Beth Graham.
There you go. Good evening.
Evening.
Good morning. My name is Chris Buck. I'm the managing director and chief operating officer for Martin Commercial Properties located at 1111 Michigan Avenue in East Lansing. I'm here to speak on behalf of the ownership of the Jolly Cedar Plaza about 300 yards to the north of the subject site, 5400 South Cedar. We are to approve this rezoning request and allow U-Haul to redevelop this long vacant parcel for the reasons outlined in our letter submitted to council dated October 12th of 2020. Communication from prospective tenants for the nearby Jolly Cedar Plaza has confirmed that this large dilapidated site to the south has been driving, has been a driving reason for them to look elsewhere. And we're grateful that there is a solution to this problem available. The surrounding area, both commercial and residential, and the adjacent trail system would benefit greatly from the safety and aesthetic that a well-lit, well-maintained viable business on this corridor will bring. A near Fortune 500 company offering to invest eight to $10 million to repurpose an approximately 9.4 acre big box site with no incentives is a special opportunity, especially in a submarket where retail vacancy stands near 27% pre-pandemic. My firm has been tracking the regional retail markets and submarkets for decades and here's what we know. The south submarket consists of just over 1.7 million square feet of retail space. Our last report, which was back in June, showed approximately 465,000 square feet of vacancy or 27%. This site is 120,000 square feet alone, which is more than a quarter of all of the vacant retail space in this submarket. And this is important because success does breed success. An investment here allows my clients just north at the Jolly Cedar Shopping Center to find tenants there and their success can trigger success on other parcels and so on. We all know the big box retailers set back from the frontage with acres of parking up front have fallen out of favor over the past decade. So it's not surprising to hear at all representing the real estate market that there have been no suitors for this space over the past three plus years. So to find a developer agreeable to improve and occupy this space with no financial incentives is virtually unheard of during this time. And I share the opinion of your staff and planning board and strongly support the rezoning of this parcel. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Next is Beth Graham, followed by Herb Riles.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to speak on behalf of the in favor of U-Haul purchasing the Kmart property. It's such a dead zone right now. I am a neighbor of that property to the south and I use the trail there. And I think, and I am a real estate appraiser, so I know the values in the area and it's such a dead zone, it needs to be developed. And we've had a lot of good conversation tonight and very good points that it, and it just would be horrible if you turned it down. Anyways, I did respond to a neighborhood question. Somebody had mentioned before that people didn't respond. I told them what I thought should go on that plan and actually they did take into consideration all the recommendations that I had put forward. So I believe they will be a good neighbor and we need to move forward with this and that given the economic times we have right now. I would also like to speak in favor of form-based code. I was on the planning commission for many years. We sat through many seminars to learn about form-based code. I think it will be good for the city. It's going to provide more flexibility and I think it's a way to go. So I think it's a way of the future and we need to move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Herb Riles, followed by John.
Good evening. My name is Herb Riles. I live in Hope, but I work right next door at 5312 South Cedar, the car wash, auto repair, oil change place right next door. So for two years, I've watched that building sit empty, watched the homeless, drug addicts, partiers use the parking lot. And the only people that I see interested in investing in that is U-Haul. Now, that's a dead zone because it's, there's nothing to slow the traffic down. I know the car place down the street remodeled based on U-Haul. My boss put a bunch of money into that business I work at, based on U-Haul taking it over. And I think what's also missed here is the rezoning map shows two acres of frontal street property that can be developed. So a pathway for expansion is already sitting there while U-Haul would be recessed and you'd still get some possible use to store frontage there. And I think this is a stable tax base, which like the other people have said, that a lot of people aren't doing business. Zoom people are going to be staying home and they're not going to be out and about. You have an opportunity, a rare one from what I can see in the economic world, of taking a great, sound business people and making this thing work for Lansing. I would urge you guys not to delay anymore and pass this as soon as possible. Let's get busy and revitalize Lansing because that's what you guys are here for, right? At least that's what I thought. Please take this under consideration. Vote for it. Let's get busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John, followed by Mar. And John, feel free to state your full name.
Good evening, everyone. Regarding these zoning issues and form-based zoning, I could offer a lot of benefit to communities. However, one concern that I've seen in a lot of developments and in Lansing is some of this new development is just complete eyesore. This contemporary, post-modern architecture, whatever you want to call it, is, won't be viewed in, in future in the same way that say late Victorian architecture, like, like the Ford Paquette plant in Detroit. Everybody loves to see it. It's beautiful. I, I don't see that buildings like the, the one at, at, I believe it's Cedar or Michigan right now, brand new architecture. In 30 years, nobody's going to say, hey, that was beautiful architecture we had back then. You know, it's not, nothing like the Queen Anne style or folk Victorian, American craftsmen, Chicago School, Federal, et cetera. And I mean, we, there's no incentive to a lot of builders other than to create something of beauty. And nobody's forcing them to do so. So unfortunately, they, they build what they can and will. Not much will be done about an old Kmart, but in, in other future builds. Regarding the shuffleboard, shuffleboard, excuse me, I could certainly get behind it and I would get behind it if there's no tax spared hours used for that. And one final note regarding the auto theft deterrent legislation there and trying to get grants, I would strongly encourage you to look at it again and accept that money so we could have more resources for police to fight auto theft. I don't think Mr. Whaley considered presence patrols as a deterrent to crime. They do deter crime. If there are police around, criminals don't want to commit crimes when the police are around and they can't be around all the time. But increased patrols do help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mar. If you could please identify yourself, followed by Marsha T. River.
Okay, hi. This is Mark Hubel. Quick note, I want to say I agree with John on the point that this quote-unquote "modern" architecture does not stand the test of time. So my comment though is, I'm a Lansing homeowner. I've actually been living in the Home Street School neighborhood for the last seven years. I've seen the building deteriorate and more recently, I assume this new developer hacked away nearly all of the shrubs and left behind stumps and giant piles of trash and brush for, for many months. I think there's still a lot of it in the cement space behind the building. That being said, I'm not in support of the rezoning of 1030 Home Street if the developers are not going to maintain the green space next to the building. It's one of the few green spaces in the neighborhood and a lot of community members use that field to walk their dogs or play soccer. I've seen people working out and kids playing on play equipment. Property has been part of a promise already to us in the neighborhood that fell through and as I understand it resulted in in a developer owing the city of Lansing hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The community uses the field behind the school and developing that space would be an insult to the Lansing citizens that have taken it upon themselves to keep the grass mowed and minimize litter. That's my comments on Zone 3, 2020. Additionally, I would also vote no confidence in Mayor Shore and demand the investigation of the murder of Anthony Hewon by Lansing Police Department. And that's it. Thank you for your time. Defund the police and support community action.
Thank you. Our speaker tonight is Marsha Ty River.
Yes, thank you. I moved to Lansing about a year ago and I am speaking because I'd like the U-Haul to come to pass. I'm associated with St. Michael's Episcopal Church down there in South Lansing. And it is exciting to me to think of the benefit that the U-Haul occupancy could bring to the other businesses and to the residents, to the tax base. And you've heard all the good arguments. You've heard the obvious that it has not sold with almost four years. I urge you to consider selling it. It would mean a lot to those of us who are involved with South Lansing. It would, it would help bring in money and I have no problem with modern architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now to the referral of the public hearings. They are all for zoning issues.
Right. So item one, two, three, and four are going to be referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Then we are to the consent agenda.
We have the consent agenda, folks. Is there anything you wish to remove from the consent agenda? Those are items one, two, three, four, and B? No, that's not right. Hold on. The tribute for Marcus Shawn.
Yeah, one thing we already did.
Yeah, I was just going to say that was already handled. Confirmation of the reappearance of Jonathan Lum to the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Board. Confirmation of appointment of Guillermo Lopez as the third ward member of the Board of Police Commissioners. Confirmation of the reappointment of Jenny Geese as the city as the City of Lansing Member of the Capitolary Transportation Authority Board. And confirmation of the appointment of DA Jones as a City of Lansing Member of the Capitolary District Library Board. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I would move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been moved. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Oh, there she is.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the consent agenda is adopted. And that brings us to resolutions for action. We have a resolution from council president Spatafor.
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I'm going to hand the gavel back over to you and then ask to speak. Okay, thank you. As you know, we're operating under COVID-19 emergency. By now, this resolution has become old hat for us. We did tweak the language a little bit in the last read adoptions to reflect the fact that we are no longer under a state, state of emergency. But we are looking to extend the resolution declaring the state of emergency through January 11th, 2021, including January 11th, 2021. That gets us into the new year with the new council schedule so that we can at least address the, if we have to extend it again and alliance with the mayor's public plan at this moment for keeping city hall closed to the public. Not to imply there's a secret plan about closing city hall. They publicly announced that city hall will be open, closed until at least the 11th of January. As always, the mayor may rescind this emergency order but cannot extend it without council's approval. So I would move the resolution.
I thank you, President Spatafor. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Swat, would you take the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted. We are to Eighty eight zero days, the resolution is adopted. We are to resolution from Councilmember Wood for the consideration.
Councilmember Wood, you're up.
Thank you. The first motion I would have is that we vote to reconsider the vote on the grant acceptance, the Michigan State Police auto theft prevention.
All right, there is a motion before us to reconsider the the vote by which the grant acceptance for the Michigan State Automobile Theft Prevention Authority passed or did not pass through discussion on the motion to reconsider. Councilmember Garza.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. Now, if if this doesn't pass, doesn't that mean that the City of Lansing has to pay back money?
No.
No.
This is a reimbursement loan, so we have not put in any we had not put in any billings for this. What it would mean is that the city would have to the police department would have to readjust their budget in in order to incorporate the hundred thousand dollars that they would have received from the state police for this position.
All right, thank you. Okay, the motion before us is reconsidering. This is not, just to be clear, it's not for passage of the resolution. It's just to reconsider the failed motion at the last meeting. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On the reconsideration, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven yeas, one nay, the resolution, the vote is reconsidered. So we are to the passage of that resolution.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. This resolution again is to receive a grant in the amount of one hundred and sixty eight thousand ninety three dollars of that. The city would match sixty seven thousand two hundred and thirty seven dollars and twenty cents. The grant is for 60%. It pays for an officer to work the investigations of auto thefts in our community. It also pays for car. It pays for educational materials that would be used by the police officer. It also pays for the a number of things that they would utilize as part of that. A car vehicle, those types of things as well. The grant period is from October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2021. And this is with again, the Michigan State Police. So with that, I would move this grant.
Thank you. The grant has been moved. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, your hand was up. All right.
Residual, sorry.
No, thank you. Okay, no further. I see no, I do see some conversation. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This is a tough reconsideration for me and I still don't know which way I'm going to come out. So I was happy voting no before because I believe that there should be less. I do believe that the detective would not prevent car thefts. And I was fine with that. And I believe that the police budget is too large and ever growing, and I think that it should shrink. So I voted no at the time. Since then, I got a phone call from Chief Green who just kind of informed me about his position, basically supporting the grant, and I definitely am considering that. I followed up with chief with the email and he sent me another one back with answering all my questions. It's pretty satisfactory, but it's still hard. So not only do I not think that it prevents thefts, but I don't think that that detective position is really that special based on the information I had. Make and correct police reports involving thefts, enter that data in the lean law enforcement network that keeps track of everything stolen. Being a victim's point of contact, that's pretty important because when people have their car stolen, I guess they want to find out what's happening. But at the same time, I also learned that usually stolen cars are abandoned someplace or recovered, not necessarily from a detective's work, but just from whatever that person stole it for, they're done, or they know it's stolen, so they don't keep it for that long. So I was thinking about that. The chief also told me that this detective has the highest caseload out of any detectives. And if it wasn't for this detective, those cases would be distributed to other detectives who work on serious things. And some not so serious things, but serious things for the most part at the detective level. So I definitely thought about that some. And then I was under pressure that there was some type of reimbursement, but it sounds like we haven't paid that yet. So that's but it's we pay a third out of the out of the whole thing, it sounds like. So I'm just kind of trying to think to myself because I don't know what I'm going to do here, but I want to explain everything because whatever it is, I know it's important. So because I might be this this flip vote, I'm not sure. The other part is that I want the the police department to be a world-class police department. I want it to be legitimate in the eyes of the community, have respect and be trusted. I believe there should be fewer police contacts. And that's basically just because of the historically unfair nature and over policing that happens in black and brown communities. I definitely agree with that. However, I don't want to impair the police department's ability to do what they think their job is. Now, if the police department and chief green knew how to handle cases or not handle cases as far as this car theft and not have to have a detective for it. Wait till they're recovered. Maybe the patrol people know how to write the report properly or do those things properly. That's one thing, but Chief Green did not tell me that they are right now capable of not handling those cases instead of just distributing them to other detectives. So I would not want a detective to have to deal with these car theft cases in lieu of investigating one of these shootings that are unsolved at this point. So there's that. But and I'm almost done here. Again, Chief Green advocated for this. He called me. I don't want to be an adversary, so to say. I want to be someone that works together and tries to make this happen. So I don't want to sabotage chief because he maybe suspected this would pass and has his position in place. He also told me that car thefts in Lansing are doubled from what they were last year. I know it's pandemic, but it's still a lot of cases that right now the police would have to handle because we don't have anything else in place. But mainly, if I do vote to support this grant, I would hope I would do it out of good faith because the chief's opinion still does matter to me and I want to work with him. But I would suggest that he does not budget for this position next year and plans on not having it. I don't know. It's just very hard. If anybody else has some thoughts, it would help me, but right now I'm leaning towards reconsidering. And not in trying to have this good faith effort now because when budget season comes around with the administration and the chief of police and everything, hearing everything that's going on, I want them to have a little bit thought out better plan on what they're going to do to address it and not have me today force them to make this cut. So I'm very torn. But if I do switch my vote, it's because chief asked me to and I still value his opinion. And I want to work together when we're reimagining policing and not necessarily be the hammer today when they don't have a plan. But they should, everybody should be on notice that this this conversation has been ongoing for months now. And the budget season is about to kick in full gear. So on this new year, I hope we're all reconsidering and reimagining, but on this short term today, I'm not sure if I'm just gonna do that after talking to the chief and hearing all his rationale.
Thank you.
Put that out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I very much appreciate it for your thoughts. I see no further discussion.
Mr. Smurka has his hand.
Oh, sorry, Jim. Yep, I see that. Go ahead.
Just the reconsideration vote was five. The action on the main.
This is, yeah. I remember the air of my ways from three weeks ago. With that, though, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, two nays, the resolution is adopted. And we are to the Committee on Development and Planning. The first item is the lease agreement for the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club.
Councilor Spitzley, I'm going to ask that you address both of the things at once. We'll take two separate votes, obviously, but I'll just let you take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a lease agreement between the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC in the City of Lansing. Highlights of the lease agreement that it is a is a 20-year lease agreement. It was originally a 40-year lease agreement, but it is now a 20-year lease agreement. It is twenty four thousand dollars annual lease payments. One of the other things about it is it is a, even though it's a 20-year lease, there's a three-year at the end of three years and after they have paid back all of their obligations under the brownfields and and other loans from the LEDC, there is an option to purchase the property. They are fully aware that any such purchase would have to go through city council. There's also a four hundred thousand dollar brownfield loan request estimated for two to three years. And there's also an LEDC loan for a liquor license in the amount of sixty five thousand dollars. With that, I will move for the approval of the lease agreement for Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club.
Let me just verify, Mr. Clerk or Mr. City Attorney, there the order they appear on our agenda is okay to pass them in that order? There's no.
I don't see any problem. You got a, you have a six bolt item though on A and a five bolt item on B.
Okay, thank you. So I will call the, I ask for discussion on item A, which is the lease agreement with the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. Seeing, oh, I gotta work on my pause time. All right, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just very quickly, President Spatafor, I was actually inclined to not support this. And through the DMP process, I thought Councilwoman Spitzley did a very nice job, you know, facilitating that process, but we were able to, you know, have the the applicants in. We were able to, I think, I think move the needle a little bit on this in the fact that we were able to take the the lease agreement down from 40 to 20. I thought, you know, was at least for the folks I represent was much more palatable. You know, that that and one of the things we wanted to make sure that there was still the 10-year recalculation. There is still the 10-year recalculation. So there will be some revenue sharing that occurs after that point. But then also there's that 2.5% increase in the annual rate each year. So those things remain intact. You know, when you look at some of the things that they are, you know, required to do per the lease agreement, you look at the community programming, whether that be open mic nights, whether that be cooking classes, things of that nature, that's that's a benefit. You look at, you know, the fact that they have to make this, there's space available to community groups and and things of that nature. The fact that they have to maintain, you know, the public restrooms. I mean, all of those are positives, but ultimately the the amendments to the lease agreement, you know, the fact that we're we're taking this down to 20 years and then the fact that we saw the absorption essentially of some of the the local labor language that is in our UDA, the fact that that is now actually part of the lease as well as the bidding piece where they're actually going to have to, as an example, post bids on the builder's exchange. Those are things that ultimately ultimately moved me to support this. But I wanted to give a hat tip to Councilwoman Spitzley. I thought she facilitated a nice process as part of the DMP vetting piece. And I think as a result, we were able to to move the need a little bit. But thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I did want to comment because I was initially a no vote as well. You know, 40 years is a long time and the 20-year lease gave me some heartburn as well. I you know, I I kept thinking about, you know, the Radisson agreement and, you know, how that was kind of a millstone around Lansing's neck, but talking and reading the lease agreement and the fact that they did incorporate in their lease the portion of the universal development agreement there as it relates to local labor. The fact that there is an option to purchase the building after three years and put it put it back on the tax rolls were all the things that tipped for me as well. And so I will also be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other comments, so I guess we'll just get over it and call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Yes.
That me, oh.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, you you blacked out there for a minute. Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Eight yeas, one nay, the resolution is adopted.
That's not how it works. Seven yeas, one nay.
Isn't that what I said?
You said eight.
Oh. Okay, we're now to the project.
All right, so Madam Chair, Councilor Spitzley, may I have it, please?
Um, I move the resolution for the Lansing Economic Development Corporation Downtown Lansing Riverfront Project, Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC at 325 Riverfront Drive.
All right, I'm going to assume that we took care of all of our conversation from the last one. So speak now. Councilmember Betts.
I'm gonna say I'm excited for this project from the perspective of the east side, so I figured might as well give some, I'm like, go ahead.
Very good. Thank you very much. No further discussion. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the role of the eight of us?
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood. Seven yeas, one nay, the resolution is adopted and we are to the sitting of public hearing for SLU four.
Councilmember Spitzley, it's the Pat Spitzley Show tonight.
I know. Thank you, Mr. President. This is setting a public hearing in consideration of the special land use permit for four dash 2020 at 900 Southland Avenue. This is a strip mall. And for 900 Southland Avenue, Suite 910, to allow for a church in the F Commercial District. It's a it's a small strip mall and this is for a new church in It's a stri- it's a small strip mall, um, and this is uh, for um, a, a new church um, in uh, Suite nine-ten. There's already a church there. Um, the, you know, the planning um, department and planning commission, they've, you know, discussed that there is adequate parking. Um, it, it is a bit unusual, um, but because of the kind of isolated nature of this strip mall, it doesn't really get a lot of commercial traffic. Um, and so, um, and it's, it's, it's been um, really not utilized to its fullest, and so um, this uh, that was one of the reasons why this was approved by um, the planning commission. And with that, I will um, move the resolution to set the public hearing. I don't remember. Um, I think it's for um, December fourteenth.
January eleventh.
January eleventh. Thank you. I was looking. I couldn't find it for January eleventh, and with that, I move the resolution. Thank you, uh, Vice President Hussein.
It is an SLU, so it can be set for the fourteenth.
Well, what it, what is the res-?
No.
I think those are fifteen-day notice.
Okay.
This due January eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got a light agenda for the fourteenth. Let's try to keep it that way, folks. All right, uh, so the resolution has been moved by Councilmember Spitzley, seeing no further uh, discussion. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. We'll come back to Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I don't, but I think you were talking over me. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Eight yeas, zero nays, uh, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the um, Committee on General Services for Claim Number seventeen sixty-six first.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So the uh, claimant in this case is Caitlin Strakowski for four hundred and sixty dollars in trash fees, uh, property located at nine zero uh, three North Capitol Avenue. Um, I do have a question before we proceed um, of Mr. Jim Smirka. Ultimately, uh, we did vet this through committee. Uh, we did deny this uh, in full. However, uh, after the meeting, Heather Sumner uh, let us know that the claimant may not have had uh, legal standing to file the claim appeal. Uh, she's a tenant, uh, Mr. Smirka at North, uh, I'm sorry, nine zero three North Capitol Avenue. We weren't aware of that, uh, as we vetted the appeal. Our understanding is that the property owner is the one with legal standing to file an appeal. Um, a tenant certainly can join. I've been on general services for a few years now, certainly can join the property owner before the body. Uh, but again, the property owner is our understanding, um, you know, serves us as that one. They must be the one filing the appeal. So um, I guess my question to you um, is, number one, am I correct? Uh, and two, if so, um, do we simply pull this? Uh, do we move this through because we already vetted it through council? Where do we go from here, Mr. Smirka?
He's a tenant. My staff is telling me, we should, as you said, we should, uh, you should pull it, send it back to committee. Yes.
Okay.
That is what we shall do. Mr. Vice President, as the chair, are you pulling this?
I certainly am.
All right, thank you.
Claim seventeen seventy-nine.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So uh, the claim in this case is a Jazza uh, Said. This was for four hundred and uh, forty dollars in fees uh, for property located at eight hundred Harris Street. Uh, they were cited for a trash violation back in January of two thousand and twenty. Um, the code enforcement officer um, asked for policy, rechecked the property. Uh, the violations were still present. Uh, we uh, notified our contractor. They arrived on site. Uh, because the viola- violation, sorry, was still present. Um, we, and, and this was uh, inside furniture that was outside. Uh, and so uh, that had been uh, placed, I think, out by the curbside. Um, in any event, uh, it was removed. The original bill in this case was, was for six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, which included uh, contractor fees and then the uh, city's administrative uh, fee. The claimant, uh, in their appeal stated that they were unaware of the policy regarding violations. Uh, however, they were cited for the same violation back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, at that time, uh, as it was told to us, the claimant did speak uh, with the co-compliance office. Um, an officer clarified the policy at that time regarding indoor items being stored outdoors. Uh, the co-compliance officer also noted in two thousand and eighteen uh, that even after the policy was explained, uh, they failed to remove the items by the compliance due date. And so those were submitted to the contract that contractor at that time. Um, anything under twenty-five hundred dollars uh, does go before the claims review committee, so this did go before the claims review committee. I believe it was back in September um, of this year. They did grant the claim, or I should say, um, a partial claim appeal on the amount of two hundred and forty-nine dollars, uh, but they denied the remaining four hundred and forty dollars. So we had representatives in from uh, that particular committee uh, to explain to the general services committee. Uh, and they told us that the preauthorization for this particular job included one hour of work and the removal of three cubic yards of waste. Based on preauthorization, based on pictures uh, of the items removed, the committee determined that um, it really shouldn't have taken the contractor two hours to remove the items. Um, nor should it, it have taken additional um, yards of waste essentially past the uh, preauthorization of three cubic yards. Um, so each of, uh, and the, and the reason uh, that they came up with, or the way they came up with this two hundred and forty-nine, as I understand it, um, is that uh, let me, let me find this real quick. Um, each additional hour of work uh, is billed at a hundred and fifty dollars, and each cubic yard of waste beyond three is billed at thirty-three dollars. So in this case, um, additional labor was billed to the property owner, um, in addition to the cubic yards of waste uh, in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine dollars. So that would leave the administrative fee of two hundred and sixty-five dollars, um, and the hour of work and the three cubic yards of waste at a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's four hundred and forty dollars. Um, that is in fact the lowest amount uh, anyone is billed for trash and debris removal. Um, so we heard uh, from the claim that's part of the general services uh, process. We did closely examine the documentation, also the photos provided, uh, and ultimately, you know, we concurred with um, claims review committee, and so we denied part of the acclaim, sorry, part of the claim, the amount of four hundred and forty dollars. Um, so with that being said, I hope all of that makes sense. If you guys have any questions, feel free uh, to ask, uh, but with that being said, I would move the uh, resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Looks like Councilmember Wood has her hand up.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, Councilmember Hussein, um, as you know, I was not in the meeting. I just want some clarification. Um, the way it is put on the agenda, and I do not have the resolution in front of me, it says that um, this is four hundred and forty dollars in board up fees.
I think when the agenda was put together, um, and, and this has been corrected, uh, Councilwoman Wood, when the agenda was put together, it was based on a letter that had been sent. That letter, um, unfortunately, it's, it's basically a copy and paste letter, and they accidentally left the board up piece in there. Uh, but this was for trash uh, and degree removal, not a board up. Does that make sense?
So the resolution does say for, for trash, not for board up.
I'm trying to pull it up. I checked it earlier today, and I believe uh, the answer is yes.
Trash removal fees, penalties and interests.
Okay. All right. I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to come back and revisit this. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, are there any further questions? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
On the claim denial, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Resolutions adopted, uh, we are to the Committee on Public Safety for the uh, Make Safe or Demolish at twenty-one oh eight East Kavanaugh.
Councilmember Garza.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is orders to make safe or demolish twenty-one oh eight East Kavanaugh. Um, there was a hearing date set, uh, let's see, it was uh, the first code violation was set for Jan- uh, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, the right tag, tag date as well. Uh, estimate for repairs is fifty-two thousand dollars, and the SEV is uh, listed at twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. There has not been a, a permit pulled, um, and both of them has expired since then, and uh, no, no, uh, no contact from the homeowner as well. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. The resolution has been moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the is adopted. And we are to the ordinances for introduction by the Committee on Development and Planning. Uh, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight eighty-eight point thirty-two for the purposes of providing for an extension of a service charge in lieu of taxes for seventy-six low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as the Walter French Apartments pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act as amended. This is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Uh, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is a uh, pilot for the Walter French, you know, the, the old Walter French Junior High School there on uh, the corner of South Cedar and um, Mount Hope. Um, they, um, the Capital Area Housing Partnership um, to put in seventy-six um, multifamily units. Also, um, they also want to have some commercial space, um, and also try um, some beneficial use for the gym and the auditorium. Um, they're looking for a six percent pilot over twenty years. Um, and the six percent pilot will just cover the residential piece. Um, they will be uh, here before council on um, December fourteenth, twenty twenty, to provide a presentation um, on this, and um, the public hearing will be scheduled for that night on December fourteenth, twenty twenty, and with that, I move the resolution to introduce and to set the public hearing. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Are there questions? Seeing none, let's uh, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Member Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Is that a yes?
I said it. I thought you said that.
Uh, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the uh, public hearing is set. And, sorry.
December fourteen.
For, yeah, for December fourteenth. We have next, um. Sorry, hang on. I'm trying to get to the correct documentation here. Okay, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding the correct document.
Uh, we are on item B on.
Yes, yes, wait, yeah, I'm not finding the, I'm not finding the actual ordinance.
Oh.
Finding other documents that are not the ordinance.
I can read it.
Is that recall?
I didn't know, I didn't know if that was allowed.
I am not seeing this.
Just as long as it's read.
Okay, if she has the title, then I, it is not in my folder.
All right, so the commi- the section one, um, let's see here, introduction of ordinance, section one map referred to as appendix D in chapter one-two-seven-nine of the city of Lansing zoning and incorporated as section one-two-four-six dash zero-two of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lansing, Michigan. Be amended to include the area bounded by West Open Avenue to the north, West Saginaw Street to the south, West Moreland Avenue to the west, and North Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard to the east, with the exception of the property at seven forty-three North Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and a strip of land along the west line of the site legally described as beginning at a point of a hundred and thirty feet north of the northeast corner of Lot one forty-three, thence north three hundred and seventy-seven feet to the northwest corner of Lot one twenty-nine, east eighty feet, south three hundred and seventy-seven feet, west eighty feet to the point of beginning Oakdale Edition. The ordinance is read.
The ordinance is read a first time by its title, refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
All right. Uh. Yeah, did you make a, go make a motion then? Yes, sorry, Council.
Yeah, so this ordinance, this is a, um, this will amend the ordinance to include the property um, St. Lawrence Hospital and that medical center that's right there on the corner. Um, this should have been included in the overlay district for future development. Um, it was unanimously recommended by the planning commission on um, November fourth, and currently there are no redevelopment plans. This is kind of like a cleanup, um, and including it in the overlay district in the event of future redevelopment opportunities. Um, the public hearing for this will be scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and with that, I move the resolution.
Thank you very much. Is there a discussion on this? All right, seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Are you hearing me?
Now I am.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is, or I'm sorry, the public hearing is set. Um, next we have following the ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the Code of Ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-six point zero-two of the code for property located at C four twenty twenty, two-twenty North Pennsylvania Avenue from C Residential District to DM four Residential District was uh, introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Mr. Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is uh, the property that's the former Eastern High School. Um, uh, the zoning to DM four own is for um, hospital expansion. Um, Sparrow Hospital did purchase it um, for potential expansion. That I move the resolution.
Okay, uh, motion has been made. Is there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Okay, I'm setting the public hearing. Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the uh, public hearing is set. Uh, next we have the following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the Code of Ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-six point zero-two of the code for property located at Z five twenty twenty, parcel number thirty-three oh one oh five oh three, three-five-two-four-three-one, northeast corner of East Miller Road and Orchard Court from F Commercial District. Northeast corner of East Miller Road and Orchard Court from F Commercial District to DM three Residential District. Was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, wrote a first time by its title. And referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, so this is, um. This is, uh, property that is on, um, the corner, I'm sorry, this is property that abuts up to, um. This area that is also owned by the city of Lansing. The proposed use for this property, um, is to, um, develop, uh. Some apartment complexes or some, some housing. They would also look to acquire the additional, um, some additional cemetery property. That is not being used by the city of Lansing, but understand that that would have to go through a number of approvals. They've talked to the parks, we've talked, the Parks Board has said that the land, um, that, that is currently owned would not be used for cemetery property. There are a couple of letters opposing it, and, um, with that, I would move the resolution to set the public hearing. Or, and just bear with me for just a second. I think it's for January eleventh as well. I'm sorry.
Vice President Hussein is shaking, but yes.
January eleventh.
All right, um, it, motion is before us, it's a public hearing, Councilmember Wood.
This is a question for the city attorney. If this is designated as cemetery property, wouldn't this have to go to a vote of the voters? To approve any sale of property?
There. It actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, this, this piece of property in question right now for the rezoning, right, okay, you got it.
I, I get that, I get that, but it, it sounds as if. They're going to need it to be able to do the rest of what they want to do, so. But if we could just answer that question, I don't have any problem setting the public hearing, but I would like that question answered.
Well, it has to be city, uh, cemetery property, and it has to go to a vote of the people.
Yes, North Cemetery is a city cemetery.
Uh, just specific provision in the charter, yes.
All right, all right, thank you.
And thank you, uh, Councilmember Wood, for bringing that up. They do know that, um. I, um, but they are saying that even without purchasing the additional, um, property. And going through the approvals, they will still, um, proceed with the project. You're welcome.
Okay, motion's been, uh, Council Vice President, seeing?
Only thing I would add is, is they did say in a committee that this, uh, was going to move forward with or without. Um, that piece, uh, but that, uh, Susan Statrick was actually on hand, and she said that she highly doubts. Uh, you know, when you look at ten units for this space, when you look at the lot size, when you look at setback requirements, things like that. She said she highly doubts it would ever make it through site plan review. But in any, I just wanted to add that piece.
And that's, and that's correct. It looks like we got in the, um, uh, in email, a revised. A site plan for this that went down from ten units, like you said, Councilmember Hussein, down to four, so. Again, with that, we'll move the resolution.
Um, okay, uh, thank you. Motion's been made. If the clerk, if he's called the roll.
On setting the public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty one, Councilmember Betts.
Sorry. I just threw up the thumbs.
I don't think the internet's ready for city council.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the public hearing is set for. We have. The following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the code of ordinances be amended. By providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty six point zero two. Of the code for property located at Z six twenty twenty. Twenty four, twenty twenty four, thirty two, twenty four, forty two, and twenty five oh six North Grand River Avenue from F Commercial, J Parking. A residential, D one professional office and G two wholesale districts to H Light Industrial District. Was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, wrote a first time by its title. And. Is referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, this is, um, a, it's, it's basically a cleanup. Of a zoning area. It is a, um, patchwork of, 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 of different zonings in one area. The master plan. We're going to consolidate it into, um, industrial. The master plan calls for industrial zoning, and it cleans up the zoning in that area. There's been no objections. To this rezone, um, there's no, uh, for firm plan. For a rezone. And with that, um, oh, we're going to have the public hearing for, um, January eleventh, twenty twenty one, and with that, I move the resolution.
Apology.
No worries. Thank you very much, Councilmember Spitzley. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N A's, the public hearing is set. And that takes us. To. Ordinances for passage by the Committee of the Whole. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances Code by amending chapter six oh two, section six oh two point one one to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote. Public health by providing for enforcement of local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code. Being nineteen seventy eight P A three. Six eight as amended, M C L thirty, three thirty three point eleven oh one. At sack to provide for penalties for willful violation of such orders or regulations with. Personal knowledge as a misdemeanor or upon being informed of such order or regulation by a law enforcement officer as a civil infraction. Your notice, uh, was read a second time, is read a second time by its title and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, there, there's not a lot to say, uh, on this one, President Spatafor, we've talked at length about this. Uh, we had a, uh, public hearing, uh, and I think it was November ninth, their last city council meeting. You know, we, we had another conversation, uh, as part of our Committee of the Whole process tonight. Uh, so with that being said, and so that we can, um, engage in, uh, any relevant discussion that needs to be had before we actually move the, uh, or I should say, vote on the ordinance. I would actually move, um, the ordinance to amend chapter six zero two, section six zero two point one one.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice President Hussein. Is there further discussion on this ordinance? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be brief. I just want to reiterate my position for voting no on this. It's my belief that the police have too many important things to do right now, and adding. This new, uh, area of things for them to do as far as. I believe this ordinance would encourage, um, people to call the police, probably nine one one.
Turn it down.
Excuse me. Probably nine one one, and then maybe get redirected to non-emergency, and then maybe. The police will never show up. I don't know if it's enforceable, but basically I don't think the police officers should be the people. Responding, and if anything, we should have our code enforcement office. Write civil infractions and not burden our LPD with. Something extra to do here, so I'll be voting no.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Wood.
Um, I have a, thank you, uh, President Spatafor, I have a question for the city attorney. Because we have an emergency ordinance in place currently. If this is passed this evening, even with them. Taken immediate effect, it's after the publication. Of the ordinance, so will we have a period of time that we won't have an ordinance?
I'd have to, have to look at, you're correct, it's not effective until after publication, that's number one. The emergency ordinance, though, I believe goes through December, if I remember right, it's like sixty days or so.
So, and this one isn't repealing that?
No, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, um. In between Committee of the Whole and now, um, I was deluged. With, um, some reading materials, and, um. One of them is giving me great pause, and this is, um. In the New York Times, and it basically says we can't police our way out of a pandemic. And it talks about how where they have used police in other communities to enforce these. Rules. It has been. Targeted unfairly in black and Latino communities. It has caused a greater spread. Of the virus particularly among the enforcement officers if there are arrests, because the people who tend not to wear the masks are the ones who carry the virus more likely. Or, or, or who are more. More likely to have the virus, I guess. Um, and then when you arrest them, you put these folks in general population in jails where they spread it. And so I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm given pause by this. So my question is, um, to, to clarify. Are we looking at going after establishments that are not enforcing? Mask orders among their patrons, or are we looking at going after individuals who are just not wearing masks? Like, what's our goal with this? Cause I, I agree, we got a pandemic, we don't want people spreading disease, but if the. If the enforcement, if the, if the ends up making it worse, I, I, I'm, I'm going to feel. It'll be pointless to do this, so. First question is, what is the goal? Are we going to go after the establishments, or are we going after individuals? Can somebody? Clarify that.
Councilmember Betts.
Yeah, I, I can clarify that. I, I talked to Peter about this a little bit, so this, uh. Ordinance covers all of the, uh, health orders given by the health department, including an individual mask mandate and the business. Um, orders as well, so the, the first of the, I don't remember if they're called emergency health orders or whatever, that Ingham County. Provided, uh, or passed, uh, is an individual mask mandate, and then the other three are related to businesses very specifically. Now, in conversations with other people in council about this, i- it sounds like. Uh, the intent of this is to target the businesses very specifically and allow the police to. Business owners who are not complying, things like that. Uh, one concern that I do have, however. Uh, a- as you said, Kathy, is that the individual mask mandate is included in this, so technically. If the police decided to do this, they could enforce the individual mask mandate as well. Which then leads to the problems that you've spoken about, generally speaking, so. Uh, at least that's my perspective. Peter, let me know if I, uh.
Yeah.
Let me know if I missed something.
I'm happy to address that to Councilmember Dunbar. This was asked for by the county health department in an effort to. Encourage compliance with orders specifically as it relates to those larger infractions. But it also was noted that, um, in the process of enforcing the mask mandate, the choice is a misdemeanor crime. Or nothing for individual mask mandate violations as well, so. The question that you're asking is harder for me to answer specifically, because I don't know who's causing the most violations. But right now, this empowers LPD. And the city to prosecute violations of these orders specifically. For all parties, but mainly those businesses that you're talking about. Because when you start looking at the process that was in place before, it went to Linda Vale or the county prosecutor, and they weren't, they weren't, there wasn't a lot of incentive there to get it done, so the, the compliance wasn't. Um, as easy to enforce, so that was the request from the county health department. Was to codify these and be able to use law enforcement in a different way, adding that due process that we talked about. This doesn't make anything illegal that wasn't illegal yesterday, uh, well, let me put that backwards. With the issue with the orders, um, absent our emergency ordinance, it just puts another layer of. Punishment in that isn't as severe, and also allows for more due process. Through our legal system rather than strictly at the county level. I don't know if that's, uh, answers your question, but I'm not looking at the same New York Times article, so I can't respond. Specifically to that, but I will say that this has been asked for, um, by the county health department. Uh, Linda Vale testified, I'm sorry, spoke to us. That she was not comfortable with the way the process worked, giving her sole discretionary. Power over enforcement. Once it was, once the citation was issued by LPD, so this was an effort to add that layer of civil infraction for those less severe violations. And also empower the city to prosecute them if, uh, and if need be, and then. Give the, um, the accused a chance for appeal through the, to this judicial system.
Okay, so my. I, I was, I watched Linda's.
Presentation.
Presentation. I was going to say testimony, it's not. Um, and I, I understand that she does not want to deal with this at her level, I get that, and I understand that this is a municipal ordinance and he asked to be. I guess my next question would be, because we're not going to be able to. I mean, the more, the more likely of a, uh. Conflicted encounter is going to happen with individual mask mandates as opposed to businesses, I believe. Um, and I would prefer that this be. Targeted at more businesses than, than individuals, but. My question now, and I don't know if this is something that Jim can answer, because I, I share Councilmember Jackson's concern about. You know, adding more onto the police. Um, when I think police should be doing major crimes. Is it possible that? This is just a brainstorm. Is it possible that the people who used to do parking enforcement, which no longer has to be done between two and five? But those folks. Be charged with this. If it was like, if you don't need a gun, if you don't need an officer. Um, to go write a ticket to a business, is that something that can be done? I know we had talked about the possibility of code enforcement versus police. But this is, this is a group of individuals that's already writing tickets. Is that something that could be done? I know that they couldn't enforce an arrest. Um, but at least for initial contact, is that something that could be considered?
The, 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 may I respond?
Yeah. I mean, I guess, Peter. Need to say, yeah.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Smirka.
So on the, uh, you know, there's two parts here, there's the, uh. And it's all going to be local, in local district court. This isn't something that goes to the county prosecutor. So i- in a knowingly and intentionally violating the health order. What would typically happen, and, and if you go to, let's say, parking enforcement, if they're qualified as law enforcement. Officers under the, under the ordinance, they would write a, a report, it would come to our office. We would evaluate it, and then. We would either recommend a warrant or not, based on the, the more severe. Situation, and the other situation is a due process of. Of informing the person that you're in violation. Of the order, and if there is failure to comply after that. A ticket can be issued, and it's a civil infraction. Again, it would come to our office, we would. Review it afterwards to see whether we would proceed or not. So yes, other law enforcement officers can. Um, are eligible to, to enforce this ordinance. Does, I don't know, does that answer your question?
Does, in that, that, again, there's a legal mechanism, um, in place. If, if, if. if, if, if it's allowed, that other officers outside of the police department could be the ones that are issuing this. Now, I, I fully agree with like, a, a complaint being written, a, a, a letter coming through you, those kind of things that separates it and makes it more administrative. But the fact is, if there's contact between officer and a belligerent person who does not want to wear a mask and it ends up getting physical, which it can, and they are arrested and taken to jail, which is always a possibility whenever there's police interaction, then that is not something that, um, is gonna pass through an administrative process like you. Um, that's what I'm trying to avoid. So I guess I'm
Mayor would like to respond. I think, is that what you were doing?
Yeah, um, so, I'm sorry, I don't usually weigh in, but, um, my understanding with COVID compliance is that they are not trained for this, um, nor are they certified for this. In talking to both Brian McGrane and Chief Green, co-compliance is not an option. Um, Kathy's right, um, and we've had to navigate, um, that situation, you know, when, months ago, when, when COVID first started and we had our operation gridlock and we had, you know, hundreds of, of these, these, um, uh, Trump folks at the Capitol. I had a lot of people call me and say, how come the police aren't, you know, arresting them because they're not wearing masks and things? And the answer was what Kathy said, we didn't want our police officers contracting COVID from people who were coming in from, from all over the state. Um, but, so there is always a risk. This ordinance doesn't say officers are going to arrest somebody. This ordinance, in essence, says, um, what they're already doing, which is, um, police officers, when they get complaints, will give, they have to give warnings. Um, and then they can arrest, but it doesn't mean they're going to, because police officers don't want to, A, they don't want to put hands on and cause violence, um, and B, they don't want to contract COVID. And we don't want them to, because then we won't have any response within our city. Um, so if there is a necessity, this, uh, they would get called one way or the other. They would have gotten called yesterday, they'll get called tomorrow, whether this passes or not. The question is, where is this adjudicated? Does it go to court? Or does it go to Lynda Vale at the health department? But it doesn't mandate Chief Green to tell his officers, you have to arrest people if you see someone without a mask. Um, it's basically complaint based. When, you know, the barber shop was doing it and we got called and we had the media calling us and saying, you're not doing anything. And, you know, our officers went there and then we, we issued a citation. And then the county prosecutor, um, didn't, didn't, um, didn't, they didn't push forward with it. Um, there's a lot of steps involved. Really what this is doing is allowing for the courts to have an action rather than, um, swamping our health officer who's trying to, um, figure out the best way to navigate a pandemic rather than being judge and jury. That's, that's the, the piece here. But, I mean, Kathy, you're right in terms of officer involvement, we don't want our officers getting COVID either. Um, and they are sensitive to that. This is why, you know, this is why they're told they have to wear masks. This is why, uh, we're trying to make sure they're safe, so we have, uh, law enforcement.
Okay, so I appreciate that. Um, I guess my, my, my other question is, it doesn't have to be police. Can it be, parking enforcement does issue tickets, they have authority, um, in that regard. Is it something that we need to pull an officer to do? Or could this, could those complaints be answered by somebody um, who would have been writing parking tickets, who's now doing the education and complaint response, um, in a police officer? And I, I'm not sure if the op, i- if it says law enforcement officer in here, I'm trying to look at the, says enforcement of local health orders pursuant to the public health code. It doesn't say in the summary here that it has to be a police officer, um, but I'm not, I'm not further down in the document. But if it's a law enforcement officer, can that, can that not be a police officer? Could it be somebody from parking? Anybody?
Our code compliance, uh, officer, our code compliance director and our police chief have both said that they, that our code compliance officers are not qualified to, to do that work. You're, you're welcome to talk to them and ask them, that's about all I know. I, you know, I don't have any further details. Um, and you're welcome to ask them, but if somebody has a, uh, if somebody has a problem, they call nine one one, that's what they do. And that goes through dispatch to, to the police and they dispatch it. Um, that's generally the way it works and code compliance works eight to, you know, eight to five. Um, so they don't respond at night. We have some offices, we have some code compliance, one, we have two to four contract employees that were doing two AM to five AM enforcement, um, which are still doing enforcement, just not overnight parking. Um, but we may not have those officers on, plus you'd have to take them off of code compliance and from premise, you know, violations and things and now put them into mask.
Premise, though.
And that's, that's what they do.
Yeah, I'm not talking about code officers, though. I was, I was specifically thinking of the folks that were writing the two to five tickets, since they don't have that work anymore.
They're code officers. They were code officers.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna call the roll on this. Mr. Clerk?
Council member Betts?
Yes.
Council member Dunbar?
No.
Council member Garza?
Yes.
Council member Hussein?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
No.
Council member Spatafor?
Yes.
Council member Spitzley?
Yes.
Council member Wood?
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, your ordinance is adopted, is there?
There were two, there were two Nays at least.
Oh, I'm sorry, six Ys, two Nays. Thank you, sorry.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Vice President, we move for immediate effect?
That's so moved.
All right, there's been a motion for immediate effect. Uh, would the clerk, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
On the motion for immediate fact, council member Betts?
No.
Council member Dunbar?
No.
Council member Garza?
Yes.
Council member Hussein?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
No.
Council member Spatafor?
Yes.
Council member Spitzley?
Yes.
Council member Wood?
Yes.
Five Ys, three Nays, the motion for immediate effect fails.
All right, Mr. Assistant City Attorney, the emergency ordinance is still in effect, though, and this will be, this will be effective thirty days after publishing, is that correct?
Uh, yes, from, from adoption.
From adoption.
Chris, do you, do you have the, uh, actual adoption date of the emergency ordinance handy?
Uh, it was the twenty-sixth of October, so appears there will be about a three-day gap.
Okay, that's fine.
So don't wear your mask on those three-day, folks.
Right after Christmas.
Actually, especially wear your mask, it'll be guaranteed a misdemeanor. All right, uh, next item is, oh, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, we're to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So please begin raising your hand for any general topic of city governments. Uh, you'll have up to three minutes to speak and we'll cut off, uh, sign up um, after the first speaker finishes speaking. So please go ahead and virtually reach your hand if you wish to address city council this evening. Um, while you are raising your hands, we will go through our, uh, reports of city officers, boards and commissions.
Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I would move that, uh, all items be considered as read and full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
Thank you. Motion before us, any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Other referrals, council member Betts?
Yes.
Council member Dunbar?
Yes.
Council member Garza? Council member Garza, did we lose you? Council?
Oh, he's still here, I don't know.
Well, we can come back to him. Council member Hussein?
Yes.
Council member Jackson?
Yes.
Council member Spatafor?
Yes.
Council member Spitzley?
Yes.
Council member Wood?
Yes.
Council member Garza?
There is, uh, Mr. Councilman Garza, we're on the motion to, uh,
We're on referrals.
The referrals. Just need your vote.
Sorry, pressed the wrong button, yes.
Okay, KEA zero Nays. So, uh, we have letters from the city clerk regarding municipal boards and commissions.
Place it up, Bob.
Letters from mayor regarding the appointment of Thomas Muth to the EDC Tifa LBRA board.
Development plan.
Uh, the appointment of Elizabeth West to the board re- review.
Uh, committee of the whole.
Z seven twenty twenty five hundred North Cedar and five fourteen Erie to, uh, G one Business District.
Development and planning.
Z eight twenty 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 nine eighteen Northeast rezoning to H Light Industrial District.
Development and planning.
A recertification redevelopment ready communities program.
Committee of the whole.
Noise special permits, um, public service department for work on Miller Roads for twelve weeks in mid-April, between mid-April and mid-October of twenty-one.
General services.
Parks and Recreation Draft Master Plan.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, objecting to the transfer of tax reverted properties to the city of Lansing.
Development and planning.
Um, an ordinance to amend chapter six oh eight to allow for consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Public services.
Communications and petitions, a claim appeal, David Chellenberger for trash fees and Commonwealth Avenue.
General services.
Communications in support of invest in the people of Lansing resolution.
Place it up, Bob.
Uh, communications expressing concerns about and support for defunding the police department.
Place it on file.
And a communication in support of ranked choice voting.
Place it in file.
Were true remarks by council members.
Any council members wishing to say something further? Council member Spitzley?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to address comments that were made the last time we met on November ninth when we were discussing um, the Betts and Dunbar resolution. You know, while it would have been easier for me and way less stressful for me to remain quiet and move on, people who know me understand how deeply, um, the conversation impacted me. You know, while we can and we should disagree, um, the path moving forward for the city, it should never be done with person unsubstantiated attacks. And the rhetoric surrounding the resolution, in my view, crossed the line of civil discussion. You know, the diverse backgrounds and life experiences of members of this council, I think, makes our council richer and it shapes us how we, you know, feel, um, the best way to move the city forward. I always say, we all have the same goal in mind to make the city better. It's how we get there is where we, you know, kind of where the, we have the most contention. Um, I, I, I'm not gonna speak for my black and brown colleagues on council, but you know, the accusations that a vote against the resolution meant that you supported white supremacists was outlandish and extremely insulting to me as a woman of color. Um, you guys know how important my family is in, you know, my mom was a sharecropper on a plantation picking cotton in Blavell, Arkansas, when she was a girl. And her family, um, endured a lot of hardships, um, including racism from actual white supremacists. My grandmother is buried in a family cemetery on a former slave plantation that the owner promised would never be disturbed. But one day, his son decided he needed the land to expand his rice farming, so he flooded that one acre over my ancestors' graves to plant rice. And my grandmother's headstone ended up in a ditch alongside the road. My dad was born in Pensacola, Florida and told me stories of hiding from the Klan as they surrounded his house as a young boy and of his sister being attacked. Um, injustice never served. And he joined the military voluntarily, earning two Purple Hearts um, and a Bronze Star for valor, but still was subject to racism when he came home. My sons had been pulled over for no apparent reason, going to a school in Grand Ledge and asked what they were doing there. The same's happened to me while dropping them off. I've had to talk with my sons and have had to answer questions um, about people's actions. Um, my family is very, very, um, familiar with with, with racism. We have an opportunity on council to move past the rhetoric and name-calling and we need to put forth meaningful change in how we govern and provide public safety to our Lansing residents. Unfortunately, you know, that continues to be stalled with name-calling, bullying and grandstanding. And as a black woman who's experienced both conscious and unconscious and institutional racism, can't imagine how I feel about that and the anger I have felt when I felt I was being accused of supporting white supremacy merely because I disagreed with the review film. It is the epitome of privilege for individuals to make those accusations when they have never dealt with the firsthand lifelong experience of racism. I don't believe the mayor or anybody on council is a white supremacist, nor do I believe they're racists. I do believe, and I've told many people, that some of the administrator's actions have been racially insensitive and tone deaf, and some of his decisions have adversely impacted people. I've been outspoken in the administration's lack of transparency and a decision not to work jointly with council to build a path forward for Lansing on this issue and many others. My feelings are that if one resident in the city of Lansing feels they are overpoliced, we need to listen and work together. We cannot lose this significant moment and I'll continue to work tirelessly with all residents who have meaningful ideas on programs and policies that will move Lansing forward. The committee on diversity and inclusion will continue to move forward and will bring forth ideas. I'm sorry. At the December fourteenth meeting, we'll have a presentation about advanced peace initiative created by Devon Bogan, homegrown right here in Lansing. Its initiatives like this one, working hand in hand with community groups and the administration will move Lansing forward. And I'm, I'm, I'm committed to that. As I close, and I appreciate you guys' indulgence in this, in this, we really do refrain and move forward from the casual use of words like racist and white supremacist. These words used to mean and used to represent the evilist of intentions and should only be used in actual cases of racism and not when you have a difference of opinion on a policy issue. I mean, even in the diversity, um, committee, someone called President Spatafor a racist and a white supremacist simply because, you know, he disagreed with a viewpoint. It, it's just unconscionable. The cumulative effects mean too much on us who have suffered a lifetime of injustice from people and policies that act, that are actually racist. So we have to be better. We have to be better and do better, um, to move the city forward and to make meaningful change in public safety and, and how we do policing in the city of Lansing. So thank you for your indulgence. And allow me to speak.
Uh, thank you, council member Spitzley. Are, there are other council members wishing to make remarks before we move on? Okay, thank you. Uh, remarks by them, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, remarks by the mayor. Mr. Mayor? They're all set, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Uh, again, you have up to three minutes to address the city council on general topics of interest to the city. And, uh, after the first speaker, we will, uh, stop accepting additional sign-ins. The first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Ash Roll.
Hello again. Um, just briefly, a few quick things. Uh, first off, I don't see the December seventh city council meeting on the city website. It was not there at five o'clock today. I don't know if it's there since then. But if it isn't posted, does that give you sufficient time for public notice to hold that meeting on December seventh? And then next, I noticed that the city trash servants will not be picking up any trash two weeks in a row, the week of Christmas and the week of New Year's for those residents who normally are picked up on Thursday and on Friday. This is problematic for two reasons. First off, because those are high productive days for a lot of trash. And second, for those of us that are on a bi-weekly trash service, that means we'll go a three-week interval or a four-week interval, depending on when your route falls, without trash pickup. This is not gonna work. Also, on the U- Also, on the U-Haul zoning, I think that it's probably a good idea to remind people that there was an unfortunate and tragic fire on their property at Jolly and Cedar when a propane tank exploded and one of their employees and his son were seriously injured and a pet dog was killed and an RV was completely destroyed. I don't think I want that next door and across the street from me. Also, for Brian, on the public health initiatives, I agree with you. And then on the issue of the grant for the police for automobile theft, just as a point of information, there were four vehicles stolen from one dealership here in town just three days ago. There have been at least three carjackings, armed carjackings, that I've heard on the scanner in the last week. And perhaps as a prosecutor, Brian, in the past, you will agree maybe that predictable prosecution leads to prevention. And it takes police being able to investigate and track car thieves to be able to predictably prosecute them, leading to prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ash Raw, followed by Sam Colgrove.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm speaking today to demand a vote of no confidence for Andy Shore and to demand a hearing on the police department murder of Anthony Hulon and the police brutality on Baker Street. The coroner ruled Anthony Hulon's death a murder, so there's no way around the truth. No one can backflip around accountability when the coroner ruled the truth. The police chief lied to us when saying something like George Floyd's murder couldn't happen Lansing because it very much did happen to Anthony Hulon. The recent police brutality on Baker Street was dangerously close to another incident of police murder of a civilian and happened so shortly after the news reporting of Anthony Hulon's murder that it is very clear the department didn't take that murder seriously. The man Lansing Police Department officers brutalized came to them asking for help, and we have video footage of the horrifying response he received. They used similar so-called restraint tactics as used in the murder of Anthony Hulon, and I fear for what would have happened had a passerby not videotaped the situation and made his presence known. This passerby was then told to leave the situation because clearly the officers involved didn't appreciate having their disgusting actions caught on camera. Shutting down transparency when they know they've done something wrong seems to be a hallmark of the department. This is happening because he is a black, this happened because he is a black man, and I, a white person, wouldn't have been met with that violence were I to seek police help. There must be a hearing. There must be a vote of no confidence. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Colgrove, followed by, I believe, Michael Lynn, Jr. Sam Colgrove? Sam Colgrove?
We can come back.
Okay, Michael Lynn, Jr., followed by Sarah Morrison.
Evening. First, I want to touch on the mask mandate situation because I think there's a the disconnect and why this is an issue is crazy to me that we can't sit back after, you know, declaring racism a public health crisis and understanding that in a perfect world with perfect, perfect police department and perfect everything, they wouldn't use this to abuse their power and, 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 you know, use this as a stopping fist situation. So we know that that's the reason why we have this issue. This is not about giving police more responsibility and worrying about that aspect. I personally am worried about them running around on the south end of town, snatching any and every kid up they want to that doesn't have a mask on and then in turn turning his pockets inside out and finding things. And we never know why the reasoning was that they stopped him. So many of these come into the jail and come into court where, you know, there's no reasoning on why they ever stopped the kid, but ended up finding a bag of weed in his pocket. And Brian, you should know that as a prosecuting attorney and as a defense attorney, you should know that this is how this happens. All they need is a reason to stop. So therefore, that mask mandate is BS. City council, you guys are in some of the toughest times. I commend you all for showing up every day. You guys are just normal citizens. Most people don't understand that aspect about you all. But given the fact that you are in the most uncomfortable and craziest times, you guys have the most uncomfortable job. And the job of calling on the no confidence vote for the mayor is at least six or seven city council meetings too late. You know, I have good conversations with most of you all, and I think that you guys are all Lansing first, and you want to see the best for the city. And I think that we, we kind of find the same pathway to that point. And I think that we can't move forward to anything that you guys are bringing to the table with the leadership we have in place. Chief Green contacting Brian to talk about this situation, but not talking about the fact that he murdered, they murdered somebody in his jail is ridiculous to me that we're still moving on as status quo and business as usual. If that was my son that died in that jail, I can tell you that I would not be on this meeting having conversation and asking you all for these, for this, for this meeting or to have the chief answer to us. That wouldn't be the situation. You guys can make of that what you want. There's a family out here that lost a family member to a homicide inside of that jail, and nobody, including the mayor, has had to answer to that situation whatsoever. And all of you on city council, every single one of you has a job to do to hold him, that chief, and everybody else involved accountable because we don't have any oversight of this. You guys are the only ones that can bring it. We have a public safety committee. What are they doing? Are they not asking questions? Why is there not a hearing putting these people on the block, Chief Green on the block to answer questions? The first time we all seen from him was when he did a fixed interview with W L N S. Vote a no confidence for the mayor, Andy Shore, at the next city council meeting. Everybody's seat here is up for grabs. Let's do this right, you guys. I'm with you. Let's go.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Morrison, followed by Kathy Engine.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. This is the first council meeting that I've been at, and we've been to several for months now, where Andy Shore has actually mentioned the retiree healthcare. The fact that this is the first time publicly you've spoken about it, but you've worked on it for a very long time behind the scenes without anybody else knowing. Do you have a grandmother or grandfather? Do you have older parents? Anybody that takes a medication, because I can tell you Humana has a lot of meds that are not in their formulary, but Medicare did. I wonder if they'd look at your actions and wonder how they could be disappointed and have someone that acts like you do, causing intentional harm to an older community, those who served the city in good faith. It's nothing less really than despicable. I'm sorry. You've heard some of the stories, the hardships, even talk of premature death due to the cost associated with your actions. I'm not sure how you can really live with yourself if you are charged with a wrongful death suit, because I think some family is going to get angry when their parent dies because they cannot afford to go to the hospital. They cannot afford their medication, or they can't afford to keep their heat on. Your intentional lack of transparency in your actions tells me that you knew what you were doing was wrong. You violated the campaign promises that you made, a lie told to get the backing of the labor unions. This is a premeditated action on your part. Your responsibility in the pain, suffering, and probable death of a few that will be a direct result of this plan is on your head. Your intentional lack of transparency, again, gives the appearance that you have something personal, a personal stake in this. Are you setting yourself up for something in the private sector? Because in the meantime, you actually are killing off Lansing's public servants. Your intentional lack of transparency, again, on where the seventeen point two million dollars from the general fund went. It gives the appearance that it was not spent wisely for the benefit of the citizens of Lansing. This question has been asked several times with no answer given. I feel like you're hiding something. Your intentional failure to detail how you came up with the false figure of eight million dollars because it's just not accurate. I've worked in healthcare thirty-five years on it, and that's not an accurate number with what the things that we've been at least presented so far. This change, I'm not exactly sure where that money is going to get spent. Judy Keeler gave us a very vague breakdown of the fact that whatever savings that you end up with are actually not a hundred percent being applied to the legacy debt, which is the reason you told us we had to go without our healthcare now. Would you tell the unions, or I guess we're not sure why you told the unions yet, they had to come up with ten million dollars to retain our legally bargained for benefits? That's two million more than the fake eight million number that you threw out. The UAW proposed leaving benefit levels the same, switching to Humana, which would have saved the city one point five million dollars. That would have been more than enough to balance your current budget while collectively exploring options to balance the city's legacy costs. This is not a new problem. The city's not paid their portion consistently for years, but the retirees did. I would also like to express concern, Mr. Smurka, because you represented the city of Lansing in these contracts now, but you also helped with the bargaining and the signing of the contracts previously. It just seems like that's a bit of a conflict of interest.
Ma'am, your time is expired.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Engine, followed by Kelsey Brienne.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, everyone. I'm calling from Beverly Place Apartment Complex. I'm property manager there. And I'm also representing our two other properties, which are Marvin Gardens in Belmont. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we're really excited to be involved in the community. We're trying to make our properties safer and the best that we can for our residents. We've gotten rid of a lot of different drug activities here and some prostitution. And I really appreciate the help from the community officer, Ken Schaper. He's really good. He comes weekly and walks the property with me. The only thing I wanted to bring up, if maybe if we could get some more, I live on the property now for a little bit to try to clean it up. And so now I can see what goes on at night. And if, you know, if it's ever possible, I think the best time to have like maybe a patrol once in a while would be between midnight and four AM if it's possible, mostly on the weekends. And then just a couple of other quick things. Marvin Gardens in Belmont, we came on a meeting, I think, a month ago. We're still having problems with the trash. You know, people are just dumping it there. And they, they also would like to see if we could get more police presence over there. So thank you for listening, and I wanted to also say for that lady in the toy drive, wish her the best, and that will definitely be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelsey Brienne, followed by Mary Hem Street.
Hi, city council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Hi, Mary is healthy. I am here for a variety of reasons. Black Lives Matter Lansing has made clear that they are asking for an immediate removal of Amy Shore as mayor and a vote of no confidence. I sit in solidarity with them, along with the solidarity of the family of Anthony Hulon was clearly murdered in our jail. I believe that it will be a vote of no confidence to Amy Shore and do a a deep investigation beyond the lawsuits that are going to cost our taxpayers millions of dollars. That shouldn't be obviously the only motivation we have, but Andy, your liability in time that our city needs to heal, it's time for you to step down. And also, when we talk about the retirees, I am a young woman who is disabled, chronically ill. You need to keep in mind that the retirees you're talking about are the the cops you're posing with on Instagram, are the black folks you're posting on Instagram with. It's important that President takes care that we are not doing performative activism, that we are taking steps to dismantle institutional racism, social discrimination. And that starts with a deep investigation and a vote of no confidence. It is important that we take these important steps. We're doing this. And as a person who, I mean, I've lived in Lansing my whole life, born, I was, you know, born at Sparrow. I've, I've lived here, invested my, my life, my taxpayer, like, you know, this is, I love Lansing. The hashtag is real for me. But I'm just, I'm just ashamed of the of the things that are happening here. My, one of my best friends was the scene buyer, was the same person who took that video of the Baker Street incident. And obviously, what happened was terrible. But my friend who took that has severe PTSD and is going through horrible situations, much less the person who was actually attacked. I know we can do better. I know we can do better. I believe in the people of Lansing. But there are some fundamental changes that need to happen. The immediate removal and resignation of Andy Shore and a vote of no confidence because I believe we can do better and I know we can do better. But we have to take action. This has been, this has been on the table far too long. So I guess I, yeah, that's what I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Hem Street, followed by Zach Whaley.
Yes, my name is John Hem Street. I don't do computers. My wife does. Retired from LPD, been retired for twenty-five years. During the time that I worked there, over the years, we gave up money for benefits, healthcare, retirement. You name it, we gave it up. When I retired in nineteen ninety-five, I was told that I would have healthcare for life and my wife would also have it, equal to the time that I retired. Whatever retirement money or whatever healthcare I was getting at the time of retirement would continue on. Now, Mr. Shore, you just took it away. I don't know where somebody is going to come up with five, six, seven thousand dollars a year. If you have a heart attack, it's not covered front of the first fifteen hundred dollars. If you have back surgery, which I just had, third one, two of them from LPD, would not be covered. You should be ashamed of yourself for flat lying, yes, lying to people when you are running for mayor of city of Lansing. Not letting the city council know, not going with the city attorney, just doing it on your own behalf. What would you think if somebody took your state retirement and your state healthcare from you? I hope that you find some decency in yourself. Maybe the city council can push them to give the people who are retired, pleased, fired, public service, whoever, what they have paid for and given up over the years. You should hold your head in shame. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zach Whaley, followed by phone number, any, one eight one.
Good evening, everyone, again. Councilmember Jackson, as a member of the fourth ward, I'm really pretty disappointed that you chose to represent Chief Green in your vote today after reconsidering the grant acceptance instead of representing your constituency. I'd really like to see the evidence that you are seeing right now that supports extending discretionary trust in the police department. You talked about how you felt trusting them with that money was something that you felt comfortable doing, and that just doesn't seem to fly with everything that's come out with them recently. No doubt, all of you have heard the continuous comments from, from the public during these past several months meetings, calling for the defunding of LPD and the reinvestment of our community. And the lack of action on this council as a whole is continuing to be equally frustrating. The police continue to be used as a tool to support systemic racism and displayed, as displayed by the ridiculous use of violent force against a twenty-five-year-old individual on Baker Street. In fact, a little bit over a week ago, I submitted a FOIA request for the body worn camera footage and the incident report from that night, but it was denied by LPD with a boilerplate indefensible explanation. When body cameras were adapted by LPD about four years ago, the intent was to increase transparency and accountability. As you know, President's paid for it. I sent you an appeal for the request of this earlier today. It's in my hope, it's my hope that you and the city attorney will grant the appeal and thereby enable that still forthcoming transparency and accountability, since those are clearly concepts that our city and police department continue to struggle with. As I do every evening that you have a meeting, and I will continue to do until action is actually taken, I'm here to call for you to act in your constituents' best interest and act on the declaration that you all made that established racism as a public health emergency by moving to defund LPD and reinvest that money in the community and by submitting a vote of no confidence in Mayor Shore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the phone number, any, one eight one, if you could identify yourself, and then followed by Jackie Hayman.
This is Chuck Schaefer, twenty-seven-year employee with the city of Lansing in building maintenance. Mayor Shore, what you've done to us and are doing to us is just terrible. I have two bad knees that I was supposed to get fixed the first of this year, and COVID cut that off. Next year, I won't be able to afford to have them done. Both were injuries while I worked at the city. I have COPD. While I worked at the city, we had to remove asbestos from buildings and stuff. And it's part of the reason I have COPD. And you're taking away my health insurance and down the road, my wife's. And I just have no vote of confidence for you. You have gone behind everybody's back to do this. Even former mayor Hollister is against what you're doing to us. When I retired a little over eight years ago, I was told I would have this insurance the rest of my life, and my wife would have it after that. And it's, it's just unbelievable that I'm not going to be able to get my knees fixed. And it's, it's just unbelievable that I'm not going to be able to get my knees fixed, that I'm not going to be able to afford my medications. I don't know what you want us to do. I understand you have your golden parachute from the state of Michigan as a legislator, but somebody should take that away from you and see how you like it. Thank you very much, Council, for everything that you people are doing to try and get this straightened out. Mayor Shore, I hope you change your mind, become a human being again, and give us back our health insurance.
Thank you. Next is Jackie Hayman followed by Sheri Wegman.
Hello, my name is Jackie Hayman. And first off, I want to strongly encourage you to have these meetings captioned as they're currently inaccessible for people who are deaf, hard of hearing, have learning disabilities, and so many more folks. Additionally, I am mainly calling in tonight to echo what so many have already stated, that I too call for a vote of no competence in Mayor Andy Shore and Chief Daryl Green. Additionally, I also call on the Lansing City Council to conduct a hearing on both the murder of Anthony Hulan and the police brutality recorded on Baker Street. As city council members, you should feel a strong responsibility for ensuring that the community, especially black members of the community, are not the targets of violent policing. And two, for the white members of city council, you, like me, have the immense privilege of being able to sit back and stay complicit while black members of the Lansing community are murdered. You have the power to bring a vote of no competence of Andy Shore and demand that there is a hearing on the murder of Anthony Hulan. Please do the right thing by placing racial justice at the core of your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheri Wegman followed by Emily Sirja.
Hi, good evening. Um, I hope retirees are being heard this late in the, the meeting. That said, I too am asking the Lansing City Council members, hold Mayor Shore accountable by way of a vote of no confidence. Many council members have said they support retired City of Lansing workers. If the mayor could be censured or even impeached, I would be asking for those actions based on his decidedly reprehensible actions of violating collective bargaining agreements. Regardless, I ask you to show your support by voting no confidence. While that may be a symbolic action, it is, at this point in time, the only level of accountability that the council members can provide to retirees who will suffer great harm with the change in retiree health insurance. In closing, I think it is vitally important and critical for the integrity of the City of Lansing to get rid of a man who betrays his words, betrays City of Lansing retirees, and violates collective bargaining agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily Sirja followed by Kristi.
Thank you. My name is Emily Sirja. I'm a resident of the First Ward. Like other callers tonight, I am calling to voice my support for Black Lives Matter Lansing in their call for the council to make a vote of no confidence in Mayor Shore and to establish a public hearing on the murder of Anthony Hulan by police. Constituents continue to call on the, on the mayor and on this council to take action on police violence and overreach, and we continue to be ignored. If the city won't defund, and it's been made exhaustingly clear that the city will not defund, it is time that we take meaningful action to show that we do not tolerate the absurd stronghold the police department has on our city government's budget and its decision-making. Councilmember Jackson, just before reversing your previous vote on a police matter this evening, you said the words, if I switch my vote, it's because chief told me to. The gravity of that statement hit me like a brick. It spoke so directly to the police department's direct influence on decision-makers in this city, irrespective of constituent input. Mayor Shore, you too continue to ignore Lansing residents' calls for action against police violence in light of the murder of a man by the LPD, in light of, of the recent bout of police brutality on Baker Street, in light of the authorized tear gassing of anti-racist protesters earlier this year, and in light of so many other transgressions against Lansing residents by police. Your actions have been shameful. If this council wants to continue to deny the, yes, white supremacist history of the institution of policing in the United States, I hope that you will at least acknowledge the ways in which Mayor Shore has been ineffective in progressing Lansing against racism and police violence. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next is Kristi followed by Mark Parker. And Kristi, if you want to give us your full name, please. Kristi.
Disastered on mute.
How about now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Kristi Bartholomew. I was injured in the line of duty in 2005 as firefighter. I've been on duty disability since 2005. As a duty disability firefighter, there are no cost of living increases. The impact of the proposed changes to my healthcare raised my healthcare costs 1,158%. That is more than $8,000. That is more than a quarter of what I receive in disability despite the city ordinance preventing me from earning past a particular level, despite the fact that no one wants to hire a broken firefighter. Mayor Shore said this on August 14th, 2017. I will not look to solve our current problems on the backs of city retirees who spent their careers serving the public and are now on fixed incomes. The way this change impacts me is not even as significant as it impacts the over 65 group. Now, we all, early in our career, thought we were going to spend, spend 25 years climbing the ranks. We all bought houses and cars and planned our expenses based on contracts that stated our benefits would go unchanged. That way we could plan for our future. What the mayor is doing right now will condemn some folks to death and will condemn more folks to misery and poverty. I plead that you reverse this decision, Mayor, because you're causing a great deal of harm and stress to so many of us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Parker followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Yes, I'm a retired wastewater operator, just retired last Thanksgiving, actually. I created a Facebook group to keep everybody, all the retirees, informed of the changes in the healthcare. However, and that, that group is pretty large, but there's an invisible population out there that I've been getting to know recently by, a lot of times just by finding out who knows them and, and going and trying to find out more about what their situation is. These are, these are an invisible population of elderly retirees. They're, they're, they're facing severe financial hardship because of these healthcare cuts that were covertly designed, you know, without the, the input from the public or unions or, well, anybody except, you know, maybe Mr. Shore and some contractors. These older people, they're, they're all older than 70. A lot of them, they're not going to be on Zoom. They're not going to be on Facebook. They have trouble hearing a lot of times. A lot of them have trouble talking. They may need oxygen to get through the day. They, they have to buy oxygen concentrators. Well, you know, this is all organized by their families, if, if they're still alive. You know, if they're, if, if they have sons and daughters, their sons and daughters help them out. But, you know, their, their pensions have been eroded over time. You know, if, if you're a, if you're a City of Lansing retiree over the age of 85, your, your pension is not much, going to not be much over 500 bucks. Some of these people have pensions that are under $500 a month. They can't, that deductible is $500 a month. They're going to have to make a choice if they get sick. If, if they, to go to the hospital, this is a very hard choice for, for some of these elderly people. And most of them are elderly widows that live in the city. Some of them are widowers, but the widow, the widows tend to get older, you know, they tend to, to live a little bit longer. They're not going to be at the mayor's webinars, you know, they're, they're, a lot of them aren't even going to realize what, what is even happening. They're going to try to go to the hospital and they're going to get this huge bill. They're not even going to realize what's going on. It's, it's, that's why we bargain these things. You know, when you do it in secret, when you have this cookie cutter plan, these people are pushed, pushed out of that, out of that agreement. You know, it's, thanks for, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Farhan Sheikh Omar followed by the Women's Center of Greater Lansing.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You know, we need leaders who will be tasked with restoring both faith inside the department and among residents. And as someone who loves this community, as someone who's very heavily involved in this community, I think it's important that we keep all of our elected officials accountable. Now, Ms. Patricia, I'm just having a hard time trying to figure out where you stand in this defund the police. You know, you're part of the committee that voted for this resolution to bring it to the whole city council. So if you had any problems with this resolution, why didn't you speak up? Why didn't you fix it then? Why was it that two weeks ago, you, you felt that it wasn't going to pass without even trying to allow others to vote on it? To me, it makes no sense. You know, we need to be asking ourselves, will there, will there be changes? You know, we have the Hulan case. We have the, the incident that happened on Baker. We have the Lilly case. So based on what we're seeing, is this the new norm for the Lansing Police Department? How will this be prevented from happening again? Why are police officers more concerned about their personal safety than the safety of the public? You know, this is not a therapy session. This is the Lansing City Council. This is where your job is to protect the community. Your job is to serve the community. I understand your feelings got hurt, which I'm not going to sit here tonight and say, if you vote no on Brandon's resolution, then you're supporting white supremacy or whatever it is. What I am going to say is that based on what you have been doing lately, it seems to me that you are an opportunist. You know, you've never spoken out about the mayor, except the past few weeks, and that's because you're running for mayor. You want his position. So now, all of a sudden, Mayor Andy Shore is not doing a good job. Well, we already knew that. So these are things that you should have said and spoken about a long time ago. And I think it's not good for you to just pick and choose when you want to, you want to help this community. Brandon has brought out this resolution. It's time to vote on it. It's time to know where everyone stands. It's not your job to just hold it back and say it's not going to pass. Let it fail. Let's see where everyone stands on this resolution. The community is depending on this resolution. Ms. Patricia, I think you're an incredible woman. I think you're, you know, you're a smart woman. It's time to get it together, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Women's Center of Greater Lansing followed by Ethan Schmidt. Women's Center, if you want to identify yourself as an individual for minutes.
Yeah, hi, this is Molina Brand. I'm a bad millennial and I couldn't figure out how to change my name. I just wanted to voice my disappointment in the support of grant funding for the police today after it was previously declined. Along with the death of Anthony Hulan recently and the recent police brutality in Baker Street, these incidents just continue to happen. And they are just evidence of why we don't need to keep giving police funding. As someone who, both of my parents were police officers and I lost my dad while he was on duty, believe me when I say that I do not to take, I do not take my support for defunding the police lightly. We have been asking you, week after week, month after month, to take action. And you all and the police chief keep peddling that reform is the answer, yet this continues to happen. This is why we need to do something else. Reforms that have been tried clearly aren't working. And these reforms are upholding racism. They're upholding white supremacy. And when we say that a policy or a vote is upholding white supremacy, it's different than saying that you as a person are upholding white, or you are as a white supremacist. Many things in America are upholding white supremacy, even though they are not inherently evil. You know, it's really hard work to look deeply into our own actions and privilege, but we have to do it. And every person on this council is privileged, especially those of you who are attorneys, lobbyists, administrators, and even I, as a black woman, am privileged and have work to do. So let's do the work together. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ethan Schmidt followed by Aiden Wood.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. When the protests first came up and the calls to defund the police started, what I continually heard over and over again was, well, police departments are very individual, which is true. And there, there isn't necessarily one straight way that all police departments have to be run. And that Lansing was different, that Lansing police weren't like those bad police that were caught on video and that we had this chief who was going to be better. And I think that the actions over the past year have shown that to be not true. We have now seen evidence of what has been called a murder by medical experts, but I don't think it's really a dispute or a controversial opinion. It was covered up. That's also not a controversial opinion and hidden from the public, not a controversial opinion. And I think at a certain, and then we were lied to about tear gassing in the Capitol. And I think at a certain point, we have to be able to look and say that, no, we're not different. We're not unique in this problem. We have just as long to go as others do. And I think there's some fear when it comes to, you know, looking at a whole new way of policing the community and, and how we view public safety. But to me, it's a lot scarier to think that we're going to keep allowing police officers to act like this. We have had the reform. At this point, a slap on the wrist isn't going to do it. We have to do better. We have to do more. And I really encourage everyone at City Council to look at this and go, what's scarier? The idea of changing community policing or the idea of allowing armed members of the state to act with impunity, which it appears that they are? Thank you very much for listening and for the rest of your night.
Thank you. Next, we have Aiden Wood followed by Erica Lynn.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Aiden. I'm a volunteer with the eviction defense hotline. Last Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, we received a call from a woman who had received a notice that she was going to be evicted within an hour. The hotline quickly mobilized to get community members to the woman's apartment in the pouring rain and talked with her and the court officer to delay the eviction. It quickly became apparent that something was very wrong with this case, even beyond the fact that this woman would have been evicted in the pouring rain the day before Thanksgiving in the middle of a pandemic. The court officer appeared to have very little knowledge of the actual policies he was supposed to be enforcing. He claimed that the CDC moratorium on eviction did not protect residents of rentals whose name is not on the lease, which is false. He also said that the CDC moratorium had to be filed with the court, which is also false. It has to be given to the landlord and this tenant had the record of sending the form to the landlord. The court officer stepped away to call the court and came back later to confirm that we had been right and he was wrong. He was about to carry out an eviction without even knowing the language of the moratorium. How many other tenants has this happened to in Lansing? Now, this particular tenant never received a Now, this particular tenant never received a notice to quit. She came home one day to find her landlady trying to illegally change the locks. She has been living without a doorknob and had to pay out of pocket to get a new lock on her door, and she also had to pay out of pocket to have her apartment bombed three times to get rid of the bedbugs, roaches, and mice that had gotten in to her apartment from an empty apartment downstairs that the landlady never had cleaned. There are enormous holes in the walls that haven't been dealt with since the tenant moved in months prior, and she doesn't have a functioning heating system, so she has to turn on her oven to heat her apartment. And when we tried to call the courts later, we learned that even though the eviction was going to be carried out the day before Thanksgiving, the courts themselves were closed for Thanksgiving. This woman's story is not unique. Throughout the city, we are going to see scores of evictions, a rise of COVID cases as people move in with family members or crowd into shelters, and increasing numbers of deaths due to exposure as we move into these winter months. With the remainder of my time, I would like to inform folks that if you are at risk of eviction, or even if a court officer has shown up to your door, or your landlord has already started moving your things on the street, you can call the eviction defense hotline at 517-234-8613. The legal system alone is not sufficient to protect our community during these unprecedented times, and community support is critical. I recently had a COVID exposure, so I can't go out and cat, canvass Lansing neighborhoods and proactively connect with tenants. But you, the person listening, may be able to. Reach out to your neighbors, ask if they need support, and make sure they have your number and the eviction defense hotline, so if they come home one day and find that their keys don't work and their belongings are out on the curb, they know to call you and the hotline for support. Again, that hotline number is 517-234-8613. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn followed by Sam Colgrove.
Thank you. I, I would like to start off by talking about the mask mandate being enforced by LPD. I honestly just think it's unconscionous, like, I can't even believe that we're talking about this right now, that this would actually be something that we would all collectively feel comfortable with LPD enforcing. This is in the wake of, just in the last couple of months, it being now publicly known, finally, that there was a death in the city jail at the hands of LPD officers. And we just recently witnessed via a bystander video blatant excessive force by LPD. That's just two things, very recently. So we are expected to have trust in LPD right now that this will not be utilized in ways that we know, which is why New York is no longer doing so because, shocker, almost everybody being arrested or taken care of were Black men. Why we think that that wouldn't happen here is beyond me. Why we think that it wouldn't be weaponized, like calling the police on Black and Brown people, is weaponized on a consistent basis, on a regular, why this would not be weaponized in that way? Why we would think that more police contact on something like this would be something that is good, risk first reward, right? Police inherently escalate situations. We should not be having them escalated by use of masks, but I digress on that. The biggest thing I wanted to talk about is, it's been very painfully obvious through propaganda's words, decisions, actions, inactions, lies, lack of transparency, that he does not care about the people of Lansing, the citizens of Lansing. So where does that leave us as the people? We are fighting blood, sweat, and tears on our own, our hardest, our hardest to stop the harm from his administration. And really feels like we are on our own in this. And I guess to contemplate why no one else is willing to step up and step out with us to make us even feel like we're being heard, that we're being listened to, that you care about harm reduction for the citizens of Lansing? Councilmember Bets recently put out an open letter. It's much appreciated, overdue in my opinion, but it outlines some really egregious things. And in the way that's the facts, incidents that have happened, but we've all known that by now. Everyone here has known all of those things. Councilmember Bets just put it out in an open letter to finally voice and say, this is unacceptable and can't be tolerated any longer. We, the people, have lost confidence in propaganda, in his leadership, right? My question, actually, my concern, is why none of you haven't? What more needs to happen? And who else does it need to happen to? And at what point does your judgment become concern to us as the people where we're losing confidence in that? I vote for no confidence, then you guys need to also.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is, for a second attempt, Sam Colgrove.
Thank you very much. I hope I'm coming through this time.
We can hear you now.
Great, well, I got my, my traditional Black Friday Humana card. My wife has spent some time figuring out our loss. Our loss will be approximately anywhere between five to six, $6,000 off the top. You have to remember, all of us have healthcare issues, and I was looking through some old files, and I saw a file for Ernie Carpenter. He hired on with me in 82. He died after eight years of service with leukemia from benzene exposures on the job. I'm forced now to make some doctor's appointments because on a fire in the south side of Lansing, believe it or not, there was a man who was making plastic parts for GM. He had some 700 gallons of dioxyanate in 35 gallon barrels in his basement, which is where the fire was. We were all exposed. I was looking through the old hazmat exposure list. I'm going to give those to one of the several doctors that I'm making appointments with now, because there are some issues. And that's going to be the problem. I, I have some help because we have presumptive healthcare now. Ernie didn't have that. We tried to raise money for his bone marrow, couldn't get it, he died, he left Lori and Caitlin and Stephanie. We didn't quite make it for him, but for me, it's presumptive. So the city is still going to pay. And I think you have to realize, you're going to have a lot of claims that are going to come for both cancer and for all cardiac issues that are going to come back to the city. So it's going to be a very burdened city system. This cost savings that you think that you have is not going to be as, as great as what you think, especially since as you hire more people in City Hall, which aren't actually serving the public, but serving the mayor, you have a net loss. So I wish he would reconsider. It's going to be expensive on a lot of people. A lot of people will suffer. And if he's not fixing this on our backs, boy, I sure feel like that saddles right on mine. I think he needs to reassess this. I think the fact that he can't get any labor to support him for his candidacy has to tell you something right there. People need to trust the mayor. They need to trust who they negotiate with. They need to trust who they work for. You trusted us, we trusted you, you may have got the better part of the deal.
Sir, thank you. Your time is up.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Clerk? That concludes our meeting this evening. Just a point of clarification, Monday, the 7th, we are having a special council meeting with a, and that is going to be Sheri, I think, 5 o'clock? No, 4 o'clock, excuse me. And the sole reason for that special meeting, well, it's two purposes. One is to set the calendar for next year, but two, to satisfy the charter requirement that we meet 26 times a year because we had to cancel on October 26th. So that's why it's not up on the site yet, is it's a special meeting, and the letter will be delivered to you this week, but just want to put my clarification out there. So at 10:46, we are adjourned.